All right, well, welcome, everyone. Thanks for being here. You can have a seat. We'll take a seat. This won't take long, so. Obviously, I don't have to tell anybody. We're currently as a city under a challenge in times with the wind that blew in over the weekend. So if I can leave you with one thing today, it would be to tell you to be neighborly. It's no different than if we have a major storm situation. Go check on your neighbors. If you see a tree laying on somebody's porch or backyard or on a power line, don't just say, hey, why didn't you take care of that already? Go knock on their door. And we also have a lot of people within the city who, because they lost power, maybe they had no problem of finding their next meal, but maybe they do now. So it's just that reminder of keeping those in your thoughts, especially those workers like the city workers from parks and public works and all over. And OPBD as well, who are working tirelessly to make sure that the city as a whole, because this is citywide. This is the business I'm in, and I can tell you when I say it's bad, it's bad. So it's not just one part of the city. It's all the city. So as we're challenged, be neighborly. Help your neighbors out. Thank you.
An affidavit publication is on file for the pre-council and city council meeting, and a current copy of the Open Meeting Act is posted on the white banner on the east wall of the legislative chambers.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Omaha City Council. We appreciate you being here today to testify on these items. As a courtesy to those in attendance, please turn your cell phones off or turn them to vibrate. Madam Clerk.
Item six, a resolution to approve the preliminary plat for UNMC Saddle Creek Campus located southwest of Farnham Street and Saddle Creek Road. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
The public hearing and vote on number six is today. We'll take the applicant first, Mr. Jobin.
Yes, Mr. President, members of the council, Larry Jobin, 1144 West Center Road, appearing on behalf of the University of Nebraska Board of Regents, which is the applicant in this particular case. With me today is Brian Spencer of the Med Center, as well as Mike Pernicki and Luke Weatherly of Olson, the consulting engineers on this particular project. I do have some exhibits to share with you today, so hopefully we've got the overhead projector set up. Just for those of you who don't know, this is showing you kind of the outer limits of what we're talking about here today. And we're here on a preliminary plat, so obviously the rezoning and final plat will come to you at a later public hearing. This shows kind of the outer limits of the preliminary plat that you have before you today. Shows Farnham on the north side, 48th Street on the west side. Of course, it's bound by Saddle Creek on the east side. So there's a couple carve-outs here. They're not part of the preliminary plat today, but there will be a revised preliminary plat at some point in time with the final plat of those particular properties, but that's sometime down the road. As far as the existing conditions, there's a variety of uses right now. This shows a zoning map. It's a combination of general industrial, general commercial, and general office, so it's kind of a mishmash of zoning. And again, what we're talking about here is everything west of Saddle Creek to 48th Street, bound by Farnham on the north and Leavenworth on the south. And of course, the existing med center is on the east side of Saddle Creek in this particular location. So the preliminary plat that's before you today is six buildable lots. And as far as the rezoning is concerned, I'll kind of go through that, too. Again, the rezoning is not before you today, just the preliminary plat. And the reason why we're doing it, and the preliminary plat at this point, is that's just part of the process, but also we want to get the preliminary plat and then the final plat going with respect to the infrastructure. So the street systems can be constructed, so eventually these lots will be buildable. And the developers that have been chosen to develop this particular area will be able to pull building permits and get moving on the development. So you've got six buildable lots. You've got Lot 1, 2, 3, 4, and 5 here shown. Eventually, you'll see that Lot 1 is TOD 1 with a mixed-use designation. And Lots 2, 3, 4, and 5 will be the TOD 2 with a mixed-use designation. And then the lot down here, Lot 6, is going to remain CC or going to be rezoned to CC with an ACI to overlay on it. So that's really the configuration of the lots and what will be the rezoning down the road with the final plat. As far as the conceptual master plan, this shows the conceptual master plan in its entirety with the Saddle Creek here, of course, dividing the med center area with the new proposed development area here. And so there's, I've got the Saddle Creek Master Plan map as well. That is everything west of Saddle Creek that's before you today on the preliminary plat and kind of show you how that interrelates. But I'll show you the main item as far as the campus master plan that's tied into this particular master plan is the LID Park that's shown right here. And there's plans at this point to have some kind of connectivity from a pedestrian perspective over Saddle Creek that would connect this new development with the existing med center campus. So this is actually what's before you today. It'll be Zoom in a little bit. And kind of the key components of what we're calling the Saddle Creek Campus Master Plan is the administrative center here, which is number one. The parking facility here, which is shown, is number nine. And then number 10 is the Innovation Center. And so that's going to be the incubator for businesses to come in and collaborate with each other. So those are kind of the three main components of the campus master plan, if you will. And the rest of what's being proposed is probably just a mix of uses, obviously consistent with the TOD 1 and the TOD 2 zoning classification. And then, of course, the CC on the south side of the particular development. So that'll just be a mix of uses. As far as the transportation system, what's being proposed here? See, my little lips. Yeah, there we go. So again, you have Saddle Creek. You've got 48th Street. You have Farnham Street on the north and Leavenworth Street on the south. So what you see here is the coordination and reconstruction of Farnham Street at 46th Street, with 46th Street being a new street that will run north and south through the development. And it will ultimately connect with 48th Street. 48th Street will no longer connect with. Leavenworth Street will actually come out onto Saddle Creek, as shown here. And then there's Emily Street, which has been proposed for quite some time. And then there's a street called Street A that's being proposed as well. So that is the, really, the infrastructure plan for this particular development and for Saddle Creek moving forward. A couple other items to point out. There is a new trail that's being proposed along 46th Street, as well as a sidewalk to be constructed along 48th Street, and then a sidewalk to be constructed along Emily. And this will be able to connect the various trail systems, I believe, from Elmwood Park all the way to the med center. And so that will be a nice addition as well. The construction starts, they're looking at spring, summer of 2022, so it's on the near horizon. And we obviously think this is an exciting project for not only this area and the med center, but also for the city at large. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions. The development team is here, and we'll go from there.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Are there any other proponents on number six today? Seeing none, any opponents? Seeing none, public hearing is closed. Councilman Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Mr. Jobin, can you come back?
Come for a sec, please.
Yes, Mr. Bagley.
I had a great meeting with you on June 24th and really walked through a couple highlights I wanted to make in that meeting. Can you talk for a minute about the traffic and parking, long-term, that you're going to deal with in this project?
Well, there's the parking facility that is being proposed that I showed here on the campus master plan, which is this building here, number nine, which will, I don't know the exact number of parking stalls that are going to be in that parking facility have been established, but it will serve quite a bit of parking here for the med center, as well as the administrative building here, shown as number one. There's also, on this infrastructure plan, there's quite a bit of on-street parking along 46th Street that's shown. And so we think that we have more than adequate parking. Also, I think it's important to point out that this is a TOD zoning, so the idea behind it is to really facilitate transit-oriented developments like this. So you've got, you know, bus routes. Maybe at some point you have mass transit opportunities besides just bus routes, but also pedestrian traffic, as well as bicycles and just other modes of transportation. So I think all that has kind of been looked at pretty extensively here for this particular development. But again, with the parking facility, the on-street parking, and then the transit-oriented nature of this development, I think that there's more than adequate parking.
And that, you answered my second question that I was going to ask you. The other thing you even mentioned in our meeting on June 24th was the walking access on Saddle Creek and Farnham, and also, I think, on, was it like 40th and Leavenworth Street, part of this plan to have, can you explain that a little bit for us?
I think that's east of this proposed development, so I'm not sure that that's necessarily part of this development, but that's part of another plan that I believe there's a, I think there's an interlocal cooperation agreement in place that calls for the reconstruction of that particular intersection, as well as sidewalks and everything else. And again, I think this transit-oriented zoning, the TOD, calls for extra-width sidewalks where available, and so up to 10 feet inside, as far as the sidewalks. So the overall concept of this particular zoning is for pedestrian access generally. And so I'm not sure the 42nd is necessarily within the TOD, but certainly pedestrian access has been thought about throughout the campus.
Okay, and Saddle Creek and Farnham Street, we had talked about that, the people that are currently walking across the street there. Is there plans to put a bridge or some kind of walking access there?
I don't know that, yeah, the LID Park, so that's part of the overall master plan. And that is shown here, if I can zoom in here. Oops. The LID Park is right here, and that's what would actually connect the main med center campus with this particular development. And the LID Park is right there. You'll see the trail systems and the greenery that goes over Saddle Creek. So that's what we're calling the LID Park that would make that pedestrian connection between the main med center campus and this particular part of the development.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Do we have a motion?
I'll make a motion.
Motion to approve?
Motion to approve, Mr. President. Thank you.
And same second, roll call.
Plaramo, Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton, Mr. President. Item six is approved, seven to zero. Item seven, an ordinance to rezon property located at 8557 Boyd Street from DR District to R5 District. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote today are on number seven. We'll take the applicant first, if he's here.
Good afternoon. My name is Alvin O'Carroll-Kay. Owner and applicant for this rezoning request at 855, sorry, you need my address. It's 9201 Franklin Street. This is a rezon request. As I mentioned, I'm the owner and the applicant for this rezon request. And I can, I'll try to keep it brief, because I know there's been some, a lot of discussion going on between myself and some of the neighborhood residents, as well as between themselves regarding this request and just the future development on this property. So I don't have much to present as far as the project design, just because, as I've expressed to them, there's a lot of, there's going to be a great deal of scrutiny behind the design that's going to go on this property. But the request comes from basically to create some guidelines for this project. Infill developments, especially just already-established neighborhoods, basically deal with a lot of tough restricting issues. And, you know, whether it's the budget, infrastructure, just sort of a lot of things that need to go into basically developing in an already-established neighborhood. One of those can be zoning. In this particular case, this property is not zoned. So one item that we're exploring and we're going to move forward with are single-family attached homes. Think about two, three, four unit structures. That's what we're proposing. And, but there's a lot of design to go into this, therefore, at this point, we are not, we haven't finalized or determined the final design. So what I'm going to show is what, basically, properties that currently exist in Omaha, townhomes that currently exist. I'm just going to show a handful, just for reference. And I'm going to show one that I'm particularly fond with, or yeah, fond of, I should say, in Omaha, just as an idea to give, you know, a little bit of information as to try, you know, our attempt to try to go away from the norm, away from what's typically seen. And by design, it actually takes a lot more time, a lot more effort, to get a little creative with the design, as well as trying to keep price points and sale prices of these homes moderately affordable. So again, here is an example of a townhome, or two townhomes, I should say. And their locations are pretty vague, just because, of course, these are people's homes. So these are just Google photo, photos, or Google picture, sorry, Google Street View pictures. This is out west by Lakeside. I'll give you that general reference. Again, these are just two townhomes individually owned. These are six townhomes. A total of six, like I said, two, or three structures of two townhomes each. This is located pretty central, up Ninetieth and Dodge area, between Ninetieth and Dodge and Ninetieth and Blondo. And then this is an example of three townhouse structures, or sorry, one structure, three townhouses. There's one, there's another, and then there's a third. These two are single-car homes. This is a two-car garage home. And as I mentioned, this is actually a collage of pictures for a development called the Tree, Treehouse Lofts, which some, some may or may not be familiar with. It's again, pretty central, about Seventy-second and Western, just to give a vague idea of where these are located. And again, these are actually a collection of 12 townhomes. So a single development, 12 townhomes designed by about 12 architects and for themselves. This is, I think, about early 50s, maybe 50s, 60s, just to give a vague idea. So this, in, again, as an example and to replace myself showing any, any developed plans at this point, is generally where the design of this particular development is going to go. But again, as I mentioned at the top of this, what's on the agenda today is just for rezoning of this property, which the neighbors have not taken very well, along with perhaps just the idea of not really showing anything at this point. So with that, hopefully I've, I've been able to, I guess, give a brief explanation how we got to this point. And I know there's been a lot of feedback from the neighbors, so I fully expect questions and certainly comments on the opposite side.
Okay. Thank you. And to stick around, I know there is a lot of opposition to it.
For sure.
I think I asked some questions for you today, too. So we'll continue with any other proponents on number seven today. Seeing none, we'll move to opponents of number seven. Please come down.
Good afternoon, President and City Council. I'm Charlotte Mai, eight seven seven four Lorrimer Avenue. I am the President of the Keystone Community Task Force. Our concerns over the zoning change, we are not opposing that land being developed. We're just opposing the R5 zoning. We asked that, or we would be okay with R3 and single, single standalone family homes. Most of Keystone is R1 through R4 with large lots. The average-sized lot in Keystone is .43 acres, and the smallest is .11 acres. The increase in traffic flow on Boyd, which is already a busy street, is a concern, is also the increase in the sewer system, because the sewer systems in the area have backed into homes. So we don't feel that 50-some homes is, is, the sewer system's going to be able to keep up. Mr. O'Kerrick did not attempt out, attempt to reach out to the Neighborhood Association until April 29th. And if he would not have gotten my phone number, he would never have attempted to reach out to the neighborhood. The lack of plans for the layout, number, and style of structure designs is a concern. And what I've been told, there is an easement or a possible easement of Eighty-seventh Street, which belongs to the Omaha Housing Authority. And if, and if he does rentals, is he going to do background checks? Example for sex offenders, Pilster Park is .3 miles away from this location, and Boyd Elementary is .2 miles away. We are asking that you deny or delay the R5 zoning until Mr. O'Kerrick has more answers in plans. Thank you.
Thank you, Charlotte. Any other opponents that want to speak today?
Hello, Rachel Herman, eighty-seven-ten Templeton Drive. I'd like to voice my opposition to the proposed rezoning at eighty-five-fifty-seven Boyd Street. The developer is seeking to build as many as 50 units on this property. That amount of traffic, or the amount of traffic that already drives Boyd on a daily basis, especially during school, is very high. In fact, the volume and speeds were so high at one point that they put speed bumps in by the school and a traffic circle by this proposed site. Something else to consider is how full Boyd School already is. Could they handle the amount of children that this development could possibly bring? A few other concerns of mine are also the upkeep of this property and the knowledge of the purchaser. I drove by the property on July 1st, and the weeds were chest-high. The lawn was mowed shortly after, but if the landowner cannot keep up the grass, how will he be able to also upkeep the units that are built? It's also been difficult to find what experience the developer has with developments. The only thing concrete I could find was a flipped single-residence home and several LLCs in his name, but no indication of what purpose they have. There are too many questions to make a decision today on this rezon. And it's also, it's great to show ideas that other people have, as he has done today. But we have yet to see his concrete ideas and his plans. Again, for all these reasons, I ask that you vote no on the rezoning today. Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent?
Hi. Sorry, I'm a little nervous. My name is Cindy Keller. My husband Ray. We live next door to the property in question. Actually, we live to the east and the south. Our address is eighty-five-fifty-five Boyd Street. The proposed change on this property is pretty dramatic. It's currently zone DR, and he's asking for a high-density zoning R5. The, we oppose this change in zoning primarily because it allows for a much higher density than what the majority of our neighborhood is made up of currently. Our property is, I'll give you a picture of the general area. Our property would be the red, and this property would be this one right here. So you can see we're development reserve, and everything else around us except for two small R5 PUDs, R3, R2, R1, single-family homes. And one of the biggest reasons that we would not like to see this go as R5 is because we're the next piece of property behind it. And we don't want to see ours go as an R5. We live on 10 acres. That is our yard. We have a big yard. But we don't want to see the development continue to encroach into the neighborhood. And that brings up the R5 PUD that you see here, which is the Keystone Crown property. And that property was specifically designed to represent a buffer between the higher-density R5s and the neighborhood. It was specifically set up so that the housing on the west edge of that development is where the duplex units are located, and the houses on the east side of that development are actually single-family homes. And we already experienced a lot of traffic, which you've already heard that from other people, but sometimes even driving through that part of the development is almost impossible because the driveways are so small that people can't legally park two vehicles in the driveways. So that puts them either blocking a sidewalk, which is a violation, or that puts them parking in the street. For example, Friday, prior to the storm, you could not even get down Eighty-seventh Avenue because there were traffic on, there were cars parked on both sides of the street, taking up the entire street. We understand that development reserve is a designation that is probably not a possible realistic expectation for that property. We know the minimum on that is one-acre lots. And we do understand his desire to develop. And we're certainly not saying that we have a problem with development on that property. We would like to see it developed. However, we would like to see R3 zoning, not R5, 7,500 minimum square-foot lots, single-family homes where people own and take pride in their ownership, take pride in being a part of a neighborhood. Keystone neighborhood has been established for a long, long time. And we would like to see it remain similar to what we currently see. One thing I would like to bring up is, unfortunately, I was not able to make the planning board hearing. I tested positive for COVID Monday before that. So I did have a letter and pictures delivered to the planning board that were never mentioned. They were hand-delivered but not acknowledged. But I did go back and read the minutes, and there was one thing in particular that really disturbed me in the minutes from the planning board hearing. Basically, at no point during that hearing was the neighborhood brought into this. There, there was in fact, a comment that Mr. Eric England, Assistant Director, stated that the proposed rezoning to R5 is master plan compliant and is consistent with the zoning directly to the west of the parcel. However, I have to ask, what about the rest of the neighborhood? He mentions one little property, that R5, and never mentions the rest of the neighborhood. There's housing to the east, south, and north of that proposed change. And as the ladies mentioned over here, that zoning is generally R1, R2, R3, and DR. And so we were, we're just asking that there be something more consistent with the current neighborhood. And especially with his lack of a plan or information regarding what he is proposing for that, at this point, we would like to see that R5 denied.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thanks. Next opponent, please.
Hello, Taysha Kosmiki, eighty-six forty-five Keystone Drive. As a homeowner in the Keystone neighborhood, I am opposed to this current ordinance. The proposed zoning change from DR to R5 places an undeniable strain on the current residents, as well as any future residents of the development, should this change be approved. To date, the developer has not been forthcoming with his plans for the improvements to be erected on the land. This is concerning because while he can hypothetically say that he will not erect more than X number of units, the R5 designation gives him plenty of leeway to say one thing now and then do something entirely different once his wish has been granted by the council. The current infrastructure is inadequate to support the addition of 30 to 50 single-family homes or multi-family housing units. Boyd Street is highly traveled as it is. Come down on any weekend during Little League or soccer season. Come down on any morning or afternoon during the school season, and you'll see the level of congestion Boyd Street is currently struggling to accommodate. Game attendees at the parks are now using the private lot of Makavika Physical Therapy, I butchered that name, but they're using that parking as overflow on Ninetieth and Boyd. Eighty-seventh is adjacent to Boyd, and that is primarily an unpaved road. The unpaved portion is narrow and will surely deteriorate with the increased traffic that will accompany a change to an R5 zoning. The current state of the sewer system is also an intricate detail to keep in mind. While I'm not opposed to the development, as many of my neighbors have stated, the density of R5 is more than this small area can reasonably bear. Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent, please. Any other opponents in the chambers today? Yes.
City Council?
Thank you. My name is Richard Wilkinson. I live at eight-five-zero-five Boyd Street, just three doors down. I motion that this be denied, or at the very least heavily reviewed, mainly for all the other statements that you've heard today. There are heavy traffic, and the high-density zones have been a huge issue off of Boyd. That's pretty much all I came up here to say, as everybody else spoke really well earlier, but just wanted to voice my opinion.
Thanks. Thanks for being here. Any other opponents today?
Hi, I am Diane Johnson, and I live at seventy-nine thirty-one Keystone Drive. And again, I am a homeowner, and the traffic on Keystone Drive is excessive. I was responsible for getting the first speed bump on Keystone Drive and went through the city in order to get that. And since then, they have placed two more in there because of the speed that is driven by the drivers that basically come up from Boyd Street to meet with Keystone Drive. Right now, there's merely a stop sign, and we hear cars honking all the time with near accidents. And I don't know, I would think maybe, I don't know what his plan is for the traffic, like maybe a roundabout, et cetera. My biggest concern is there's no plan. And when it goes to the R5, he mentioned 30 as a very good possibility that he would have 30 units where people would be living in them, because we went to a neighborhood meeting. So 30 is a lot more than what he showed with those pictures that looked wonderful and beautiful and duplexes and up to 12. And again, I don't think we would be as, nearly as concerned with that as we are with no plan, when the gentleman before us isn't even talking about rezoning yet. But he had a detailed plan of what was going to happen, where the parking was going to be, how many units there would be, the lots, et cetera. And it doesn't appear to me that we're at that point yet. So in order to get to that point, at least have the zoning be delayed until there's an actual plan in place so that we know what we're looking at. That's my concern.
Thank you. Any other opponents that want to speak today? Seeing none, I'm not going to close public hearing because I suspect we're going to want to continue that. But I will say, this is in my district, in the Keystone area. And I've been in conversation with the Neighborhood Association and was on-site yesterday and understand a lot of the concerns that are being expressed here, and I think rightfully so, in terms of the generalities we have so far to work with here. Mr. O'Kerrick, if you can come to the microphone, please. I might ask you just a few questions today. Name and address again for the record.
Yes, Alvin O'Kerrick, ninety-two oh one Franklin Street.
Thank you. So it does sound like you were a bit slow to engage the neighborhood on, on the rezoning, right before planning board and I think a neighborhood meeting right around that time.
Sure.
We have not met yet, and I'd like to do that to understand what we're trying to accomplish here. I think the neighbors raised very good points about not being opposed to development per se and understanding it might not, might not be DR forever in that kind of unique spot right there. But also legitimate concerns about just not knowing what the actual plan is and what, what the real intent is. And in many cases like this, where it's undeveloped property in an established neighborhood, there are tools that the Planning Department can suggest or can work with a developer on that confirm exactly what that's going to be and what you are required to do, rather than having something rezoned up front and then having that kind of open-ended question with the neighborhood remain. And that's generally the PUD tool that was mentioned by one of the testifiers here, which I think is a good one. So maybe just a few questions for you here today. Are you able to give it any more detail exactly what you want to accomplish here? You mentioned single-family attached homes, maybe two or three to each structure. You know, is that owner occupied? Is that to be rented? What type of development are you pursuing here?
Yeah. So the goal are, the goal is individually-plotted owner-occupied townhome.
Okay.
And again, town- And again, townhomes, hence the actual zoning required or zoning requested because for the minimum for, to have a townhouse structure, which is effectively a structure with sheared walls, similar to a duplex, threeplex or fourplex, but are platted individually for each owner that's going to reside in those properties. That is the minimum zoning required to have that by rights, so to speak.
That kind of product.
And that's the reason for this particular zoning request.
And then something with the R5, you're hearing a lot of concern from the neighborhood about R5 and the density that implies.
Sure.
Are you, would you consider something a little bit less dense if that was something?
So absolutely. And hence, again, the range that was given to them. Again, by rights with that R5 zoning, the site area per unit sort of gives you an idea of what the maximum is. There's, but my minimum, the 30 number that I mentioned was based on pretty standard-sized lots, which are 10,000, 11,000 square feet, which can house a duplex, for instance. So a 10,000 or 11,000 square foot lot could house a duplex and/or two individual townhomes with approximately 5,000, 5,500 to 6,000, depending on, again, the size of the lot, square feet of parcel or lot size, basically. So there is a big range. The reason we haven't honed in on, again, are because some of the challenges that, like I said, urban infill like this could face, which, you know, if, whereas a standard plan, just maybe typical homes that we're used to seeing, it would be easier to determine based on a pretty standard-sized home, what square footage you would need. There is a plan and really a goal to try to be a little unique, to provide something fresher than what we're typically used to seeing. There are hundreds of contractors, hundreds of builders around town that are doing similar, not necessarily exact, homes. And it was never my intent to be another one of those. Well, with a little creativity or trying to be a little different, there are challenges. Hiring an architect versus stock plans, that provides some challenges as well. And yes, certainly, I could come. And I must say, I have been in discussions with planning department to, again, try to determine, to at least create a baseline for this conversation and the zoning request that was to follow. And again, that 30-plus number was determined. That was taking actually similar plot layouts or parcel layouts that are literally in the immediate area, including the property to the west that one of the opponents showed. Just trying to replicate what's already there, just to kind of give an idea of what's possible. That, again, creates a baseline where to go, and it certainly creates a baseline for me. But trying to, again, create something that's different, similar to the treehouse, again, it's a very unique one in Omaha. There aren't many like it. Something like that isn't created from parcelling out, you know, a large piece of land into square rectangular plots. It generally is dictated by the design that actually sits on the site. So again, and part of the challenges to an infill development like this are costs, of course. And it would be a little unwise to go through two or three iterations of design, which, of course, equates to dollars when this project or a project like this is already strained because improvements to the sewer or street requirements, like was mentioned, factor into the, again, the financials of doing a project like this. So it's very easy to see how these challenges could stack up against me or anyone trying to do a similar thing. So it's going to be wiser for, again, a very necessary guideline such as zoning, which a lot of projects benefit from having existing zoning, for instance. This one does not. Having something like that in place creates a very strict guideline what to follow and what structures could be put on to be able to provide leeway to move to the next step, which is going to be design. And of course, determination, finally, of how many units can fit in on that parcel.
Yeah, I can appreciate that, and that's a common dilemma that developers have, especially with infill projects. But I would also say that I'm not comfortable with moving forward today on rezoning, just not knowing those things yet. And so what I might suggest is that if you want to continue, we consider meeting with the Neighborhood Association, have some further conversations about what exactly it is you're trying to accomplish with the planning department and what that development really could be. Put some structure around it, either through a PUD process or a replating process that's much more detailed than anything we have here today before we should move forward with anything. So rather than spend more time on it today, I think there's a lot more work to be done on this.
Of course.
And we have a pretty busy day today. But I will say to my council members that I can't make motions. But if someone wants to make a motion to delay this, say, three weeks, that's something I would be supportive of. And I would add, if after those three weeks, we can't come to some agreement or some compromise that works for folks, maybe we take a step back and take more time.
Sure.
But that'd be my initial thought today. And if we're able to meet, I would also mention today that I also have received concerns about another potential project at 73rd and Pinckney in the neighborhood that just also went to planning board and will be coming to city council probably in the next six to eight weeks that perhaps we could discuss too.
Sure.
Is that okay?
Absolutely. I'd love to.
All right. Thank you. With that, I'm going to yield the floor and recognize Mr. Bagley.
Thanks, Mr. President. I will support making a motion to extend this out for three weeks. Four weeks, okay, thank you. For four weeks, in order for the neighborhood group and yourself to get together, I think, I look forward to that in four weeks when we hear from you again on the progress you made at least introducing yourselves and getting a plan for that. I think that's a great idea. So that's a motion. I'd like to extend that to four weeks.
And continue public hearing?
Yes.
Thank you. I'll second that motion. Mr. Rowe.
I'd like to ask, can you get that information put together in four weeks?
I'm sure I can.
Okay.
No further lights. There's a motion and a second to delay for four weeks and continue public hearing. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Item eight, an ordinance to rezon property located at 561 South 84th Street from R1 District to R2 District, Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Public hearing and vote on number eight is today. Is the applicant here? Seeing none. Is there any proponents for number eight? Seeing none. Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Make a motion to accept number, ordinance number 42583.
Motion and a second. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item eight is approved, seven to zero. Items nine and 10 can be considered together for property located at 9207 Blondo Street. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item nine, an ordinance to rezone this property from R2 District to R5 District. Item 10, an ordinance to mend the boundaries of the MCC District to incorporate this property into that district.
Public hearing and vote on items number nine and 10 are today. We have the applicant by Zoom. Mr. Ferguson, you're recognized. As soon as we get you off mute. There you go.
Good afternoon. My name is Tyron Ferguson. Here on behalf of a client and partner, Nick Froddart, who's not here today. We-
And your address, please.
Sorry, I'm so sorry. Address is at 9207 Blondo Street.
Thank you.
Yes, sir. So we decided, and he decided, that he wanted to be able to incorporate what was already consistent with Omaha's master plan, right in that little subdivision of R5. Currently, I believe the property is zone R2. And his goals were to construct either a duplex or maybe just another townhome, which is very consistent with the properties from the west of the property itself. So that's why we are here today at the next level to see if we can have consistent approvals among you guys.
Thank you. I appreciate it. Are there any other proponents here today? Seeing none. Any opponents in the chambers? Seeing none. Public hearings closed. This is in my district, and I'll move approval. Sorry, if I can't do that, so I'll have, I'll request someone move approval. Mr. Harding motioned. I'll second. Roll call.
Yes. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Thank you.
Items 11 and 12 can be considered together for property located at 2902 Y Street and 3030 and 3031 Upland Parkway. Planning Board and Planning Department recommend approval. Item 11, an ordinance to rezone this property from GI District and HI District to R5 District. Item 12, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the future land use element of the master plan to change the future land use map from open space to low-density residential.
Public hearing and vote today on number 11 and 12. We'll take the applicant first, if they're here. Seeing none. Any proponents on number 11 and 12? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 13, to consider a Class D liquor license application for Cocoa Key Hotel located at 3321 South 72nd Street. The applicant has requested this item be withdrawn.
Roll call.
Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 14, to consider a Class D liquor license application for Come and Go, number 330, located at 17925 Burt Street.
Public hearing and vote today are on number 14. We have the applicant by Zoom. Mr. Millaham? Here to answer questions, I presume?
Yes, I definitely appreciate you guys having me. And I just wanted to give kind of a brief description here of Come and Go, if you guys wouldn't mind.
Sure. And then your address, please.
Perfect, yep. So it'd be for 17925 Burt Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68118. So Come and Go, we build green stores for the environment through our water system, our lighting, and then all of the recycling that we do. And then we also give back 10% of our profits to the communities that we operate in. And then as far as it goes with age-restricted products, we do actually hire a third party that we pay to come into every single store at least three times per month to make sure that we are appropriately IDing. And then lastly, we do have around 180 to 200 team members at all times in the Omaha market.
Great. Thanks for that overview. Are there any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 14 is approved, seven to zero. Item 15, to consider an addition application for the Caddyshack located at 2076 North 117th Avenue to add an outdoor area to their Class D liquor license. Ease communication from the Planning Department regarding permits for the outdoor area.
Public hearing and vote on number 15 is today. The applicant, please.
Do I need to come up? Trey Johnson, 18305 Nina.
Sure. Yeah, we always appreciate the applicant being here.
Cut.
Here to answer questions?
Yep.
Great. Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none. Any opponents? Seeing none. Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 16, to consider an addition application for wine, beer, and spirits located at 3435 Oakview Drive to add an outdoor area to their Class D liquor license. Ease communication from the Planning Department regarding permits for the outdoor area.
Public hearing and vote on number 16 is today. We'll hear from the applicant, Mr. Kelly.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, members of the council. My name is Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Ave. Here this afternoon on behalf of the applicant, happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call. Thank you. Motion approved. Subject to permits in a second. Roll call.
Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 16 is approved, seven to zero. Item 17, to consider an addition application for Tanner's Bar and Grill located at 17330 West Center Road, Suite 102, to add an outdoor area to their Class I liquor license. Ease communication from the Planning Department regarding permits for the outdoor area.
Public hearing and vote on number 17 is today. Mr. Kelly.
Mr. President, members of the council, Sean Kelly, 2804 South 87th Ave. Here on behalf of the applicant.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Any opponents? Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 18, to consider a special designated liquor license application for Azul Sports Bar and Grill. The applicant has requested this item be withdrawn.
Roll call.
Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Item 19, to consider a special designated liquor license application for Perry's Place Bar and Grill located at 9652 Mockingbird Drive for an outdoor concert on July 31st, 2021, from 8:00 p.m. to midnight with music until midnight.
Public hearing and vote on number 19 is today. The applicant, please.
Chad Perry, 9652 Mockingbird Drive. Here for any questions?
Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none. Any opponents? Seeing none. Public hearings closed. Roll call.
Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Item 19 is approved, seven to zero. Consent agenda. Any member of the city council may cause any item placed on the consent agenda to be removed. Items removed from the consent agenda shall be taken up by the city council immediately following the consent agenda in the order in which they were removed unless otherwise provided by the city council rules of order.
The public hearing on agenda items 23 through 23 were held on June 29th. Roll call.
Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
So those in attendance know, there's a request to remove items number 44 and 45 from the consent agenda. So first, we'll take the public hearings and agenda items number 24 through 43. If you wish to address the city council regarding these items, please come to the microphone, indicate the number you would wish to address, identify yourself by name, address, and who you represent. And if you are a proponent, are an opponent. This is items 24 through 43.
Louis Jimenez, 3306 Burt Street. I'm a proponent for 43. For the city of Omaha to pay its portion of the cost to hold the municipal elections on and off year, election off year. I mean, elections need to happen in a democracy. So even though I don't think that the Douglas County Election Commission did a good job at letting folks know that there was going to be a city election. Thank you, guys. Got to pay the bills for this. You might want to talk to the legislator to move the city elections to a presidential election year so that there's more participation in, for the electors to participate in the city elections. I think that would be good. And I also want to take the time to congratulate the newcomers to the council. I know that you worked hard for your votes and also that you've been working hard for your community. So welcome to the council. I challenge you guys to be advocates for the community. I didn't think that the previous council was a good advocate for the city of Omaha. So hopefully, the next four years, you really become bona fide advocates. Yeah, that's about it. And then also, if I could take a moment to kind of- And then also, if I could take a moment to kind of generalize the election.
If it's about an agenda item.
Paying the treasure?
Yeah.
Okay, fine.
All right, thanks, Louis.
You guys have extra privilege than I do, so I will not do that.
Appreciate your testimony. Any others that wish to speak on items 24 through 43? I will note, for council members' knowledge, we do have the managers of items number 25 and 26 by Zoom if needed. Yes, please go. No, you're fine.
Hi, I'm Cindy Maxwell Ostick. I live at 16626 Harney Street here in Omaha, and I'm here as a proponent of item number 43. First, I am a person that wanted to thank the Douglas County Election Commission for how they administered our elections. They went smoothly and we can trust the authenticity and the accuracy of them, and I believe that the amount it costs to put these elections on should be paid. So I approve of that particular agenda item. I'm here because I would wish that in the future we could save that money for a primary election. I am a voter, volunteer member, and president of Rank the Vote Nebraska, and we are trying to bring ranked choice voting to our Cornhusker state, and it would be a way for the city of Omaha to save approximately $600,000 by not holding a primary election and doing ranked choice voting to complete the primary and the general at the same time. And we have information we'd love to share with the city council. I know the city charter is coming up for review in the next few years, and hopefully you could work with the state as well as the Secretary of State to make that happen. If you have any questions, I'd be happy to talk to you.
Thank you. I believe you all sent us an email, too, didn't you?
Yep, I will. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else wish to speak on these items?
Before calling for a motion in a second, I'll just recognize item number 29 and the Parks Department for moving this project forward. This is the first of four access points needed to connect the Keystone Trail to what is now the Lake Cunningham Trail that goes around the entirety of Lake Cunningham. And once we do that, that'll connect Lake Cunningham all the way south to off-air force base, which will be a huge improvement to our trail system. And I believe that project is in the CIP and will be in the CIP again and funded in 2022 and '23 to complete that project, which will be a big step forward for us. With that, is there a motion? No further lights. Second, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 44, a resolution to approve the appointment of Tiffany Hunter to the Board of Directors for the Omaha Municipal Land Bank as a non-voting member for a term from July 14, 2021 to July 13, 2024.
Public hearing on number 44 is today. Are there any proponents?
Good afternoon, members of the city council. Mr. President, Thomas Warren, Mayor's Office, 1819 Farnham. I'm here to affirm Mayor Stotler's desire to appoint Tiffany Hunter as a non-voting member. She relocated out of District 2, which did create the vacancy, and of course, we'd like to appoint her as a non-voting member.
Thank you. Can you answer any questions? Thank you. Any other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Cheryl Weston. Address 1811 Emmett Street, Omaha, Nebraska, 68110. The reason I'm coming forth as a proponent against this is that Ms. Tiffany Hunter is a very well-qualified individual, and right now, she was, or before all of this, she was listed as a voting member. And her qualifications were excellent. So my question, too, because it is not explained, and the mayor didn't say what was going to happen, is if she is moved to a non-voting position, and according to the ordinance and what is on the website for the land, there is only one spot for a non-voting that would be left. And on June 29, 2021, item 50, resolution number 20210708, you appointed or elected Juanita Johnson from District 2 to be a non-voting member. So does this mean that you will take District 2's non-voting member and she will be removed? All of a sudden, we'll see on the agenda that she has been removed. Then you're going to put Tiffany in that place, remove her, and you want to put, according to item 45, Ben Gray into a voting position. So I am opposed to that, and I think that until it is explained clearly that Ms. Johnson, which is District 2's representative, will not be removed, that you're going to add another position, another non-voting position. I think that this should be laid over or not voted on or not passed because there's not clarity. And what you're doing is, again, I have to say, District 2, what's going to happen? And I think that needs to be clarified, and hopefully you will agree. If you don't have clarification, we don't have clarification, and when I say "we", I say to District 2. So if you can give clarification, maybe then we could say, okay, we would support that. But we are not in favor of having Tiffany Hunter removed since she was just put into that place in April of 2021. However, on June 25 is when this came up to remove her and replace that with Ben Gray. And I think there's some District 2 people that are here, and if you could stand, if you are against that, you know, we're tired of things happening that you don't tell.
Cheryl, I appreciate the testimony, but we're not going to talk to the audience, talk to the council, please.
I'm talking to, excuse me, you. I just asked them to stand. So is that permissible or not?
We don't accommodate that, no.
Okay. So that is my opponent.
Thank you. Next opponent, please.
Good afternoon, board. Precious McKesson, 6716 Nebraska Avenue, Omaha, Nebraska, former non-voting member on the Omaha Land Bank. I'm just going to ask if this could be held over. Since this came about, I've had many questions as a former member of the Land Bank asking me how the process works, and I don't think there's clarity because when I was on the board, we had a process, and at this time, that process to me is not being followed according to how I was appointed onto that board. So just so that the community can have a better understanding of how it works and understand how the appointees come on the Land Bank, I would ask if this could please be held over just to give them that opportunity to meet with the Land Bank board members to get a better understanding of how it works. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing. Mr. Warren, or sure?
Pastor Cedric Higgins of the Pilgrim Baptist Church, 2501 Hamilton Street in District 2. I also concur with, I believe, Precious that came before us, that this be delayed and not spoken on today to get better clarity understanding of what is the process. Not only what is the process, those who being recommended, do they meet the qualifications for the process? And did the mayor give the respect to current or previous person for input or from the community? Who represent, because District 2 has spoken who they like for representation to be from their district. And when District 2 have spoken, I think also that community ought to be considered, especially when North Omaha now is a great interest of the Land Bank. North Omaha has prime property as well as great value. And with that, I don't think people really, really understand what power move this is. And it's a move also that we, I hope that if that does take place, that our current representative and previous representative from District 2 can work together because that's the most important thing, that we work together to represent District 2. And I'm tired of seeing District 2 being divided. And this is a move that divides our community. And I think in order to keep us together, I think we need to have communication and a better understanding of what's going on so that District 2 can be together and not divided. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor. Any other opponents today?
Will Timmons, 2464 Harney Street, Apartment 6. So I actually oppose this appointment because I think Tiffany Hunter would make a better voting representative for District 3, which she now resides in. I think her qualifications are all there, and you know, I think the, what, two, two and a half months she served since she's been appointed really isn't adequate for, you know, kind of what the purpose of those positions on the Land Bank are where it's for someone who has influence in the community to be able to serve and make an impact. Also somewhat concerning to me is the general lack of knowledge of, you know, how these processes work, you know, not just from a non-legislative perspective, but the actual Omaha Municipal Code itself is literally incoherent. In the Omaha Municipal Land Bank section, it lists off qualifications that are needed for someone to serve on the board. You know, they can be met jointly by the community making up the Land Bank. No individual has to have just one qualification. But there is a subsection D, and it cites a section in the Municipal Code that doesn't exist because they copy and pasted it from the Nebraska Municipal Code guidelines. I mean, needless to say, I think that's concerning that our, the laws governing what we're doing are literally incoherent, but I also think it's concerning because how can the general public have any clue what they're supposed to be doing and, you know, what guidelines they're supposed to be following if the people making the guidelines don't have the presence of mind to realize that, you know, when you're adding a subsection, that it's referencing something that doesn't exist within that same section? That's all I got. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other opponents here today? Seeing none, I want to close public hearing and offer Mr. Warren a chance to review what he's heard or offer any additional comments he might want to offer about the process?
In regard to item number 45?
44. Okay. He's available for questions. Ms. Melton, you're recognized.
Thank you. Who can answer this, but I do know, I have a question. I believe that, and I just want clarification, and Mr. Warren, maybe you can clarify it, too, but may include Mr. Koozie, but according to the municipal Land Bank appointment, it's one person from every district.
That's correct.
And so is Ms. Hunter moved from District 2 to District 3?
Correct.
Okay.
I believe. She moved out of District 2.
Okay, and that's, she was a District 2. That's why she was a voting member. Now she lives in District 3, but we don't have an opening for a District 3 appointment. Is that right?
No, it would be an at-large, non-voting member.
Okay. And so Ms. Hunter then is being appointed based upon her qualifications?
Correct.
Okay. So I just want, I wanted to just be clear that that the mayor wasn't forcing her from a voting member to a non-voting member, that it had to do with her district move.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you very much for that clarification. I appreciate that.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm still not clear. Chief, could you come back up, please? So we know how important the Land Bank is, sorry, Mayor's Chief of Staff. And each district has a representative, a voting member. We know that, one through seven. So, and I don't know if you know, but I'm looking, and it seems that there's obviously the planning director who's on the Land Bank as well, unless he's not on there anymore as a non-voting member. There's another outside board member as a non-voting member. Councilman Johnson was appointed to the Land Bank, correct, Mr. President?
Correct.
So I would take that spot. So how many spots are available on the Land Bank? Because according to the website that I'm looking at now, there's only one opening, and it's for a non-voting member.
The non-voting member vacancy, this is the recommendation for the appointment of the non-voting member Tiffany Hunter, the vacant position.
Okay. Then jumping ahead, number 45, we have another appointment. Where, how many spots can we have on the Land Bank?
I'm not sure of the total number. However, item 45 is in regards to the representative from District 2, the voting member, and the recommendation to appoint Ben Gray.
I don't know if we have an expert here on Land Bank. I was looking for Troy Anderson, but...
Attorney Matt Koozie's here.
Oh, Jennifer Taylor, come on down. Let's hear how many spots the city can have within the Land Bank. Obviously, one through seven districts are voting members. Let's hear how many non-voting and how many extra spots we can have, please.
Good afternoon, Jennifer Taylor, City Law Department. Section 2-238 of the Omaha Municipal Code identifies the Board of Directors and its makeup for the Omaha Municipal Land Bank. And that board shall consist of seven voting members as appointed by the mayor and confirmed by the city council. Those seven voting members represent the seven districts that we have. The planning director, Mr. Fanslaw, serves as a non-voting ex officio member. That's established by code. One member of the city council, as appointed by the city council, serves as a non-voting ex officio member. That is, Councilman Johnson has been appointed to serve in that position. And lastly, other such non-voting members as are appointed by the mayor. There is no specific number of non-voting members that can be on the Land Bank. So there can be as many or as few as are appointed by the mayor and confirmed by this council.
Perfect. That's what I needed here. Thank you.
Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
I will state, too, that I don't know, there's, I'll state that even though 44 and 45 are about the same board, they're two totally separate. The reason for 44 say anyway. The reason for 44 is because they wanted to keep a good member on there who had moved out of the district, and so that's why the mayor was appointing her. And again, 44 and 45 are only connected because it's the same board and should be treated separately as well. Thanks.
Thank you. And Jennifer, one question for me, too. So when you talk about the board appointments you just discussed and how that's outlined, that's outlined in state law, I believe, isn't it?
The makeup of the seven voting members is actually, is established by state law. So state law requires those skill sets to be contained within the board members. As far as having non-voting members, that last piece is, I think, something that's in our code. The council member and the planning director, ex officio members, that are established by state law as well.
So that respect to Land Bank is a little bit different than most of our city boards and commissions because it was created by an act of the state legislature and then adopted by ordinance by the city council and has those designated spots to appoint.
Correct. The state legislature passed the Land Bank Act, which actually allows the city to establish a land bank. It doesn't require the city to establish a land bank. And then this council, the city council, the city of Omaha, established a land bank for about six or seven years ago. That was something that this council, the council chose to do. And then at that point, there are requirements pursuant to state law that we were required to include within our act and our ordinance, and then some additional things that we added as well.
So rather prescriptive in terms of requirements and qualifications for folks to be appointed.
Correct.
And then the last thing I would note that somebody did already acknowledge is that the only appointment the city council gets to this board directly is the non-voting member of the city council, which, as Councilman Palermo noted, is Councilmember Johnson that we appointed.
Correct. And that appointment is not made by the mayor, it's made by the council. And any other non-voting member appointment made to the board does not does not detract or take the place of that city council person's position on the board.
Thank you. No further lights? Any further comments from the council? There's a motion in a second? Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Row, Bagley, Harding, Johnson, Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed seven to zero. Item 45, a
Item forty-five, a resolution to approve the appointment of Ben Gray to the Board of Directors for the Omaha Municipal Land Bank as a representative for District Two for a term from July fourteenth, twenty twenty-one to July thirteenth, twenty twenty-four.
Public hearing and vote on number forty-five is today. Proponents, please.
Thomas Warren, Mayor's Office, eighteen nineteen Farnham Street. Again, would like to affirm the mayor's desire to appoint Ben Gray as a representative, the voting member from District Two, to the land bank based on his knowledge, his skills, his experience, having been a part of the land bank since its inception. Here to answer any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? See none? Any opponents?
Cheryl Weston, one eight one one Emmett Street, Omaha, Nebraska, zip code six eight one one zero. Thank you for allowing me to have this time to speak before you. And I have given each one of, or have prepared a packet for each one of you and has been distributed. So dear city council members, I have recognized each one of you. And as a lifelong North Omaha district constituent and activist, I am asking the city council to vote no today on the appointment of Ben Gray as, to serve as a voting member and representative for District Two on the Board of Directors for the Omaha Municipal Land Bank. And I think it's very important that we realize that this is serving as a voting member for District Two. Mr. Gray has had his opportunity to serve as a representative for District Two. On May eleventh, twenty twenty-one, Omaha City Council, District Two community overwhelmingly voted for Juanita Johnson to be our elected official. We clearly and loudly rejected Ben Gray. This community wants new leadership. Leaders with leader capacity that will look out for the community's interests, not corporate interests, but District Two. And we voted in the election. And by voting in, Ms. Johnson, we said enough is enough. There are other great candidates within our community to consider. We are sorry that the mayor did not take the time, did not ask the community, did not research in order to suggest another appointment. We all know, or we assume, that this was all done behind the scenes. Once again, city council, or once again, community District Two was not involved. Our leaders were not asked. Our community activists were not asked. The residents were not asked. Candidates, we have candidates in District Two. Candidates who have unsung voices that need to be heard. Candidates who have new and fresh ideals. Only considering and reaching out to the same people will stifle the growth for our community. And we're trying to say, we want to come together, just as Pastor Perkins says. We don't want to be a divided community. We want to be a whole community. Our growth in our community. We have asked the mayor to open up the wealth of other candidates with our community, given other opportunities and to appoint other leadership capacity that will be looking out for our community interests, the concerns of the people. The majority of the properties within the municipal land bank portfolio are located in North Omaha District Two. And passing Mayor Stothard's request to appoint Ben Gray, you, each one of you who were duly elected city council representatives, you're negating our community's request. We voted Ben Gray out. We said that we wanted another official. Why are you going to assist in putting him back into a leadership role for our district? What about if it was your district? How would you feel? Passing Mr. Gray's appointment in any capacity, voting or non-voting, would be going against the wishes of District Two constituents. It would also be validating the remarks that each one of you made on the night of inauguration, when you took the oath. It's on camera and I sat in that third row and heard each one of you talk about how you were there and you were going to help bring the whole community. Yes, you were elected from one district, but it was Omaha community. You were going to be there to help bring about a working togetherness, work to support the voters and their desires, working for Omaha as a whole. Were those just words that you said? In addition, as to why we are asking for your no vote, to begin with Mr. Gray's application, one, it was incomplete. So let's take a look at this. Hopefully I'm, oops, sorry. The Board of Candidate Response and Oath clearly says right at the top, second line, "All feels required." All feels required. It's in bold. It clearly states, down at the bottom, "Please return this completed form along with a copy of your resume to Carrie Murphy, Deputy Chief of Staff for Communications." This was it. There is no resume. Why? Why is there no resume? Could it be that the resume would show just because you served on a board in a non-voting position, just because you were a former city council person and you have the relationships with those of you who are still on the city council? That does not make it right. That does not make it right. If you move along and, let me see, oops. That is the city council ordinance, number four zero zero five two. Page two, item C, an ordinance that Mr. Gray signed as a council member introducing this, clearly states the qualifications needed. And look at item number two. The voting members of the board shall have collective viable skills, expertise and knowledge in market rate and affordable residential, commercial, industrial, mixed use, real estate, development, financing, law, purchasing and sales, asset management, economic, community development. Mr. Gray does not have those. Yes, he was on the board as a non-voting member. Yes, he was a city councilman. Yes, he helped to get this in place. But he does not have what the qualifications that are listed in the ordinance that he signed and introduced, and it passed with a seven to zero. Also, as it was just stated by Ms. Taylor, the Assistant City Attorney, she clarified, and she can come back up after me, maybe I misunderstood, but she said that the state legislator who put this through also had specific qualifications that were required. Mr. Gray does not have those. If we go back to here, the Board Candidate Response Form and Oath, again, it clearly says, I go back, "All feels required." Then explain to me, when you look at, why is the box not checked? My appointment to the above-named board and commission in term of services of this city would not conflict with my professional interest. Professional or personal interest. That box is not checked. Why? Why are you approving something if this was not completed and it's an incomplete? Also, it's listed, Mr. Gray listed his business name as VG Gray and Associates. According to checking with the state, that does not exist. What is the business? Where is the business? Where is it registered with? This incomplete application was accepted and signed off by Carrie Murphy, Deputy Chief of Staff for Communications, and Jennifer Taylor, Assistant City Counsel, or Assistant City Attorney. According to the evidence ordinance, it is very evident that the request to appoint Ben Gray to the municipal land bank should not be approved as submitted. So I would ask you, why is it that District Two always has to accept substandard treatment? Why is it that everything can just go through in this community? And we, you need our community. You need our community. But you don't take that into consideration. It's just like, business as usual, do what you want. You give us no respect. And you use us because that's how you get funding from the government. You use District Two. Give us some respect. We've come together, we showed you, we voted. We voted. We did not want Mr. Gray. We wanted new leadership. And then I asked you, so again, why is it we have to accept substandard? Because let me show you. Is that not? There it is. Okay. This is a copy from the land bank website, which shows each one of the voting representatives for each one of your districts. Chris Rock, District Five, Don Rowe. Look at the qualifications. Real estate agent. And there are more qualifications if you want to check those out on the website. Robert Woodling, President Foundation Development LLC. He serves his treasure, and that's Mr. Harding's representative. John Heen, or Heen, I may be pronouncing it, sorry. Commercial real estate broker, Investors Realty, Inc. Voting member. Danny Bagley's representative. Mary Barnes, President Mortgage Loan Officer, Lincoln Federal Savings Bank. That's your representative, Mr. Palermo, Vinnie. Michael Reidman, President of Residential Sales, NP Dodge Real Estate, voting member, District Seven, and that's yours, Ms. Mamie Melton. And then we have Thomas McLei, President Clarity Development Company, District One, President Peter Festersons. Look at that. That's qualifications, each one of those. But you want to vote and put into a voting position an individual that has none of that. The only thing he can come and bring to the board is he was a former city council representative for District Two, who on May eleventh was clearly, we couldn't have made it any more clear, no more Ben Gray. And we don't think it's fair that you will vote, and you most likely will today. You're not going to hold it over. Your minds are already made up, and this is just District Two, business as usual. So all of the time that we spend here, and we have, and I do believe, I have clearly made my case, and I am not an attorney, but just a citizen, a longtime citizen of North Omaha District Two. So I presented, don't really feel as if it's going to change your mind, but at least you can't say we didn't try and we didn't provide all the evidence to support our desire as not to have this as a voting member. And we would ask, and a letter has been sent to the mayor, is to lay this over and look a little bit deeper and find a more qualified individual. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. I'll request no clapping in the chambers, please. That'd be out of order. But I will ask for further opponents that wish to speak today.
Good afternoon, Mr. President, City Council, Terrence Haynes, sixty-three twenty-sixth North Forty-second. Well, I couldn't say it any better, and I'm not going to try to say it any better, but I do want to speak from the grassroots perspective of District Two. We have been overlooked. We have been underrepresented. And I can honestly say from my own personal experience, this has been at least fifty years. The land bank was created, and the land bank, if you look at the definition of the land bank, the land bank is actually, it's a monopoly. It's not only a monopoly, but it's also a racket, if you look up the definition of racketeering. And it doesn't matter whether it's passed by law or not, okay? Slavery was a law, didn't make it right, okay? I'm not here to make anything flowery or make it smooth and easy to swallow because we have suffered in District Two for a long time. And everybody on this council and everybody that represents this city knows it. We've been purposefully left out of the city plan. That's why North Omaha looks the way that it does. That's why we have the crime that we have. That's why we have the poverty that we have. That's why we have the trauma that we have. And nobody ever says anything. And we just keep getting the same representation. The mayor picks from the same pool of individuals, and I am a very, very proud, I have no problem saying it, I'm a very proud black man. The mayor keeps picking from the same pool of individuals to represent people that look like me that don't represent people that look like me. And we're tired of it. I don't care whether they look like me. We have a saying in the hood, all kinfolk are all skinfolk and kinfolk. What that means is everybody that looks like you doesn't necessarily have your best interests at heart. And these individuals that the mayor keeps picking from does not have our best interests at heart. But what they do have is the ability to represent her looking like us. And we're tired of it. We're not the only people. Yeah, there are people that are not here that are tired of it. But like the sister said, nobody ever bothers to ask us. We're a whole adult people in North Omaha. We get handheld, we get told what's going to happen, and most times it's like right before it's going to happen. We don't even have time to prepare for it. Some of the evidence of that, and I appreciate Mr. Palermo, you know, telling us be neighborly. We should be neighborly in this city. This city should be whole, but it's not. This is two cities, and it's always been divided, ever since I can remember. I'm fifty-one years old. Nineteen sixty-nine was when the biggest division of this city started. That was when North Omaha was put on punishment for rising up, for unjust killing in our community. There's pictorial evidence, there's all kinds of city evidence, plannings that have gone on, developments that have gone on. And like the sister said, you need us. You do. You might not think so because Channel Three, Six and Seven and the World Herald portrays us as a bunch of animals, a bunch of degenerates. We are whole, productive... We are whole, productive human beings, just like everybody else in this city. But that's how we get treated. If you don't believe me, come take a tour. I'll guide you through the tour. Matter of fact, this is an open invite for any city council member that wants to come tour in North Omaha and meet some of its residents up close and personal. We have artists and musicians and great thinkers and inventors, things you wouldn't believe that exist in North Omaha. But by these different appointments, this shows the discredit and the disregard for North Omaha. Ben Gray was our city council representative for 12 years. North Omaha still looks the same way that it does since 1969. I don't hear anything about Walgreens being built, Salem being built. All of those were things that would happen with or without him. Okay? When we talk about budgets that have been made, those things, they don't benefit the people. All the money that's been spent, it hasn't benefited us. Otherwise, we wouldn't be here having this conversation. The land bank holds over 7,000 properties. Over half of those properties are in North Omaha. 7,000. And to be honest with you, the way the land bank was created, the city held all those properties prior to the land bank. The land bank was created as a third-party entity, as a nonprofit by the city. You know why? Because somebody called them out and said, you know what? Y'all can't hold this much property. This is not right. It's probably illegal. So we need to figure out a way to legally hold this. Hey, let's create a land bank. That way, it doesn't look like it's ours, but it is ours. They hold properties for nonprofits, and they even hold them to a longer extent than they're supposed to. And the only developers that can develop from the land bank properties, even though they say anybody can, is nonprofits. You want to keep our community nonprofit. The definition is in the word, nonprofit. No profit. This doesn't happen in other districts. Can any other council member tell me that this happens in their district? It doesn't exist. But you get to go home and you get to be comfortable in your district. Your district's clean. Your district has infrastructure. The Municipal Land Bank is supposed to be working to make the areas better. There are land bank properties that are not kept. They're not mowed. There are even people who they've given rights to develop, like Habitat, and their properties are not kept. And they're sitting on properties, just sitting on. But you won't let an individual get property from the land bank and just sit on it. All of these things came under the watch of Ben Gray. So no, we don't want him to represent us in District Two as a voting member. To do what? To continue to hold the gate open? No, we don't want that. It's not our desire. We've stood and said it. We've spoken, said it. I'm sure some other people will come up and speak after me and say the same thing. We don't want it. And there's this one little thing that all humans have. It's called selective attention. Okay? Selective attention, for those that don't know, means that you're only concerned with those things right in front of you. It's human nature. So I don't fault anybody. We're all humans. But when somebody brings something to your attention and you ignore it, that then transcends from selective attention to willful ignorance. And willful ignorance means that you don't care. So the people of North Omaha have said, we do not want this person representing us. And you know what? I don't have anything personally against Ben Gray. Just like anybody else, I want him to be able to eat too. If he needs a slice of bread, I'm going to give him a slice of bread. I'm not going to let him hold the knife to cut the bread. But I'll give him a slice.
I'm going to ask you to wrap up your comments if others do want to speak.
Okay. Like I said, just know, this is not the person that we want representing us.
Thank you. And I may ask, just for a show of hands, who else intends to speak? Okay, thank you. Next opponent.
How y'all doing? Sherman Wells, 4718 Kansas Avenue. I'm in a hurry because I got to go. We've been spending all week feeding our community because we've had power outages throughout North Omaha. And so the community has not looked for handouts, but we've been together and been feeding people. So we actually got something going on at four. But I wanted to be here to just represent the people because right now, and Ben, for a long time, I am the voice of the people. And I want to keep it simple and to the point. My sister right here, Ms. Cheryl, said everything factual, and I'm going to just give you the truth. Regardless of the mayor's desires, Ben Gray does not represent District Two. His last name is Gray because his black is faded. That's it. And unfortunately, the mayor and Mr. Warren is the only people that have a desire to work with him, not us. So I got to go feed people and take care of my district and take care of my community. So y'all think that over while y'all make a vote on people's lives that y'all don't even really care about.
Thank you, and thanks for that work in the community today. Next opponent, please.
My name is Carl Tyler, 2431 Bristol Street, Omaha, Nebraska. Sister Cheryl, thank you for the presentation. Brother Ben will always be my brother, but I just need Sister Wendy to thank you for being who you are and for the work that you're doing. My partner tells me not to tell my age. But I just turned 82 last Saturday, I think, or whatever. But I've been in this community for a long time, and I'm just sitting here thinking about what was said by Sister Johnson. I'm an original person that was appointed by the governor to put Fort Omaha where it is. I fought, I mean, Metro, the Metro Community College Board of Directors. I was appointed by Governor Thon, I think it was. And I fought for Fort Omaha 100%. And that's why we have it today. I'm also a chairperson of what they call North Omaha Community Development, NOCD. We developed 24th and Lake Street, the Blue Lion Center, which is now the, whatever they're calling it. I'm kind of emotional because I sit here and see. One of the things people talk about, and I thank you, Sister, for what you said, I don't believe in waiting on nobody to do nothing for me. Me and God can handle anything. And I've always thought about that. That is why I always sit in, Fannie Lou Hamer and Malcolm X is the people that I look to for direction, plus my grandmother, because that's where she taught me. We was building 24th Street, we, 24th and Lake. When you go to 24th and Lake Street, why you think we put all that glass there before you changed it? Horizon Townhomes, we did that. But the thing of it is, there's a very powerful saying that we have. If you don't speak to, if you don't speak to, if you don't speak to me, you can't speak for me. If you don't work with me, you can't work for me. We have too many folks that's running down here working for you that don't speak to us. We have too many folks that want to speak for us, but they don't want to speak to us. That's including the mayor. And might be including some of you. Because the fact of it is, you don't hear us. But like I'm telling the young people, don't worry about that. Organize yourselves. Yeah, you got to go up against the police. And we said we fought the police back in the day. But we didn't know about the prosecuting attorney. We didn't know about the general attorney. And we didn't know about the so-called righteous judges. Why do you think they call criminal justice criminal justice? Because we got too many criminals running the justice system. That's just the way it is for me. And my thing of it is, is that it bothers me that the things that I see in our community that could be done, like Habitat for Humanity. I was in Washington DC and met the man who put the money into Habitat for Humanity. In Mississippi, we put together a board. Habitat for Humanity is the worst thing that ever happened in North Omaha with them self-de, what I call self-destuck houses in five years. You won't be nowhere around. You can't talk to them. And then we go to their meetings and nothing, but nobody's on the board that look like me. The guy that I thought was a part of the council, he was a security guard. There's a lot of things that need to be said here and done. You and new people that's coming in that's going to change. Omaha is dead. I remember the time when this was the most beautiful place in the world to me. Omaha is dead. It's been dead for about 10 years, ever since Jim Sutter left. I just got into it with a police officer because I'm 82 years and I got to take my belt off. Then he going to tell me I'm a crybaby? No respect. But see, that ain't, that can't happen. You was put here, you just got here. When you going to change things? You need to send that back to the mayor and say, look, North Omaha, with the few people that's here, they ain't with that. I'm not against Ben as far as Ben, but the credentials that she said, put somebody with those credentials on the board from North Omaha so that we can start making some progress. But I know I'm going to be surprised if you reject this and tell the mayor to come back to somebody else.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Yeah, pastor.
Once again, Pastor Cedric Perkins with Pilkham Baptist Church, 2501 Hamilton Street, 68131. Also, I'm a resident, I believe in your district, President Fetterson. I've come here because I'm concerned about my community. I have great respect for Chief Warren. I have some respect for Ben Gray. Me and a group of pastors, we fought hard. And I sometimes I feel bad about it. The very first time Ben was put in office, we worked hard and got him in office because we thought that we was supporting somebody who would support us. Then it was just a few years later, Ben stated to us in a meeting, y'all just a church. And I never forgot that. I've forgiven him for that, but I've never forgotten that. Then not too long ago, with this pandemic, it was stated that the church needs to stay in its place because of the fact that church was doing a movement in the community to make sure that testing could be done for its residents. Now, I spoke to Councilman Gray about that comment. He said he didn't say that, so I can't, I'm not going to hold him against that one. But the first one, I do know for a fact. He said, you all just a church. And a company like that shared with me that what he did not represent everybody in our community. That's my concern, that the citizens have spoken, that they believe that he does not represent everyone in their district with such great magnitude that this position holds for the land in North Omaha. I'm not asking you all to vote him down. I'm not even asking that today. What I come to ask is that you don't vote and request that the mayor take a good look, research to find who can represent our community that would bring us together and not divide us. I came here in 2004 from Alabama. When you think of Alabama, you think of a divided state, racism and so forth, and this and that. I've never seen a city divided like Omaha in my whole life. And I've traveled all across this nation. When I was state president for the Baptist churches, I had a slogan that if you only have two teeth in your mouth, they look better together than spread apart. Not only they look better, but they bite better. And I want North Omaha District Two to look better and bite better.
Thank you. Also an opponent? Come on down.
How you doing? My name is Willie Hamilton, 4200 North 30th. I wasn't going to come and speak.
I must have recognized you with your hat, I was too low down.
I wasn't going to come and speak because I didn't want to make this personal. But when you have an individual that's been in office for 12 years and have never visited a facility in his own community, and then you don't go to other individuals in that community and ask them to apply for a position, something is wrong with that picture. I don't think Ben Gray has the ability to be able to separate personal feelings from making a logical decision without any bias. He's shown it over and over again. And that's why we're at this point. Because we have a community that's divided. Certain groups here, certain cliques here, there's certain cliques here. But the one who paying the price are our kids, our educational system, jobs, housing, criminal justice reform. Our community is hurting because you guys are not listening. The one who's been on this council for a while. I know Pete, Pete been down to the community a couple times. Amy, number love for you. Miss Johnson. But I've never seen any of you other guys in North Omaha. Y'all need to be in North Omaha and start having discussions with the community as a whole and not with a select group. And I think if you do that, we'll be much more able to come together as a community when y'all start pitting each other against each other. So I'm hoping that you are listening to what we are saying and you take time and just push this aside and see, can you come up with a better candidate? And if you can't, oh, well. But at least you should push it aside and start listening to North Omaha. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents or opponents, sorry?
Brian Page, pastor of the Pleasant Green Baptist Church, which is located in District Two. I wasn't going to say anything like Brother Hamilton wasn't going to come, but just after Sister Cheryl Weston, I believe, after her presentation, just got me thinking. We weren't as well briefed before coming into this meeting, just found out about it. But as a pastor and leader in our community, it rose some concerns. And so I got a few notes. I wanted also to recognize, former Councilman Ben Gray's work in North Long Community. I'm not up here to bash, work or anything like that. He has done great work. A lot of opportunities have opened up in our community because of contacts and what Ben Gray has done. So I'd want to acknowledge his work on today and the work that he continues to do in our community. I'm up here because just listening to the facts and the qualifications that was outlined by Sister Weston. Clearly, there's some errors, some boxes weren't marked, and maybe there was, the resume was not submitted. Maybe it was, but we didn't see one today based on the other qualifications of the districts that was presented by Sister Weston in her presentation. So my question becomes, is to the council is, would you allow the candidate that you're possibly about to vote on in District Two be your representative on your land bank in your districts? When I looked at the qualifications, you know, there was real estate development all involved. So I'm just looking at the facts and qualifications that has been set. And today, we have not seen those qualifications. Regardless if it was Ben Gray, LeBron James, Brian Page, whoever it is, I'm just looking at the qualifications that has been presented to us on today in District Two. And right now, we didn't see the qualifications that were, that met what Sister Weston had put up there. So I'm asking today that you would consider delaying the vote and allowing the mayor to work with our current councilwoman, Sister Johnson. Because the people have voted. Because the people have voted, the members that I serve, my congregation, they have voted. And I would not be a good leader if I didn't express that, that they voted for Sister Johnson. And I believe it's right and in order that the mayor sit down and talk with Sister Johnson on the list of candidates that she is considering. So the question is, did the mayor consult our councilwoman? When she said, we're gonna put Mr. Gray in this position, did she sit down and have a conversation with him? With her, excuse me. You know, what was Sister Johnson's thoughts? They just ran against each other. Are they working together? Will they communicate together? So the person that goes into this position, as a leader of a community, I want to make sure that they have Sister Johnson's stamp of approval. Because she represents me, she represents our congregation. And I want to know the person that is in her district is the one that she can partner with. Because again, I've heard before there's gonna be division. If the person that the mayor appoints and you vote on, her and Sister, they don't agree or they have disagreements. Well, that's gonna cause, here we go with that word, more division in our community. And therefore, we don't want to see that. We've got too much of that. So I'm asking that you would actually delay the vote so that City Councilman Woman, City Councilman Johnson would be able to work with the mayor to come to qualified candidates. And again, the fact said the application wasn't complete. So I throw this back at you again. With the qualifications and the resume you didn't see today, would you allow them to run your district, your land bank district? Ben Gray's a great man, done great work. But the question is, if we put the pen to paper, would you let him run your districts, regardless of his background, based on qualifications and facts that has already been set? Is this person the qualified person for this position? So again, I want to thank you for your time, for listening to me on today. Just asked that you would be considered of the District Two that Sister Johnson represents. We're all not here today, but a few of us here today, just asking that you would take your time with this and not rush this through. And that you would listen to the people, as I'm sure Councilman Johnson would listen to your people if they were in her position. And I ask that you show the same respect to our councilwoman during this time and not vote and delay. And let's go back to the drawing table. May God bless you and God keep you.
Thank you. Any other opponents today?
Deshaun Cunningham, 821 Willshire Boulevard, Los Angeles, California. I'm not gonna add too much extra in addition to what's already been said. But I would like to speak to the disrespect and the temperament that comes from certain city officials when dealing with people in North Omaha. I think one of the most telling things that you all saw on Ben's last day here was when former Councilman Jerem went to give a speech and gave a very long speech about his accomplishments and the things that he was proud of and he was able to accomplish as a councilman leaving in his district. When it came time for Ben Gray to speak, check the tape, the very first thing out of his mouth was, I'm gonna miss the paycheck. So if that's the attitude of the person we're dealing with, to be in a city council position with that attitude. There are many people that don't want that attitude to carry over to something as important as the land bank. So like I said, I'm not saying anything that's in question. You guys record all these meetings. So most of you laughed at it when he said it. So if that's the attitude that we get from people, this is why we have the disconnect and the division. And just because he is from North Omaha and looks like North Omaha does not mean he has North Omaha's best interests in mind. So I would like to have that be a consideration while moving forward to this today. My recommendation would be either just say no to him today or delay this. There are, I can think of at least five other people in North Omaha that have at least construction experience, real estate experience that Ben does not have that could be potential candidates in the future. So I would encourage you all today to either delay this or just outright vote no. Thank you.
Thank you. Next opponent?
Afternoon, my name is Dwayne Hawkins, pastor in South Omaha. But president of New Era Baptist State Convention, Nebraska, which is located 2601 North 24th Street. 26 churches in our state convention, the majority of them reside in District Two. Probably a couple of thousand parishioners. My intent was just to come and listen, but after hearing what I've heard, really felt compelled. Because in my estimation, the question that none of us can answer today is this. Why would the mayor make this appointment knowing the controversial nature? I appreciate the work that Ben Gray has done throughout the decades. My mind goes back to Kaleidoscope when I was a kid. And I'm grateful for his service to our community. But the mayor knew that there was a race in District Two. Juanita Johnson won the vote. I wonder if her appointment was to allow him to continue the work at the expense of the votes of District Two. None of us can answer that question today. And the person who set this in motion is not here to speak. That's the mayor. And as a result of her appointment, you've heard backlash from the community. And so, since she can't answer those questions, seven members of the council have the power to decide. Are you going to side with the mayor's individual appointment? Or are you gonna listen to the people? That's your decision that you have to own and you have to be accountable for. I wish we could ask the mayor why she did what she did, knowing the context of the appointment that she made. But we don't get to ask her. It's all we have to do is appeal to you because you have the power to agree with the mayor. Which may have made an appointment to allow an individual continue the work that they've done, which appears to be at the expense of the people. You vote for a person or you're voting for the people. Those are my comments.
Thank you. Any other opponents today? Seeing none, I'll close public hearing and recognize Councilmember Milton.
And when it comes to being on the city council, actually being on the city council and the amount that we do actually gives you a lot of experience. I think one of the things is being a lawyer was something that would give you a qualification to be on the land bank. However, in my opinion, I wouldn't be able to be on the land bank had I not had the experiences that I have had over the last eight years. I'm not on the land bank. But what I'm saying is I've garnered a lot of experience being on the city council. And I know Mr. Gray has as well. And in fact, Mr. Gray is the one that educated me, in addition to Mr. Fetterston, on the land bank that I was opposed to in the beginning. Until I actually talked to Mr. Gray, who traveled around to other cities and actually researched the land bank all over the nation. And I know Mr. Gray is here and I'm wondering if he would like to come down and speak about his experience on the land bank and what he's done. I don't know if I'm putting you on the spot, but.
For the record, Ben Gray, 6946 North 54th Avenue, 68152. I, to answer your question, or at least to give you a little bit of background, because first of all, there was so much misinformation that was given today, I just don't know where to start. But let me, let me start by saying, first of all, let me say, we talked about divisions in North Omaha. When the election was over, about two weeks after that, I met with Ms. Johnson and Willie Barney to talk about District Two. And I talked to Ms. Johnson, that was Councilmember Johnson at the time, and shared with her some of the things that I had been doing. Some of the things that she needed to kind of follow up on. Gave her my number, told her whenever you needed me, give me a call. She knows that's true. And so I didn't see this as division. I saw this as, you know, me extending an olive branch, let's move forward. And then yesterday, I get a screenshot of a Facebook post that Ms. Johnson did that says, and I want to be correct when I say it here. But it was a call to action to come down and speak on items 44 and 45. A call to action. Action to do what? I didn't know what the action was about. Obviously, today, I understand what it was about. It was about a number of people who I have, some people I don't know, others who I have had disagreements with in the past. But they were also always business decisions where we disagree. But in this particular instance, for whatever reason, people are assuming that I, for some reason, have some desire to divide the community. How, why would I have that kind of desire when I called Willie Barney and asked, let's set up a meeting with Ms. Johnson so that I could go over a number of the things that I had been doing? Now, in reference to the land bank, Councilmember Milton, I'd been around the country, several cities, looked at the best model for a land bank. Settled on one formerly in my hometown of Cleveland. And came back here, lobbied the legislature to get this passed, got it passed. And then we introduced, working with myself, Councilmember Fetterston and Councilmember Jerem, we put together the ordinance for the land bank. And let me just also say that, because one thing I heard today that was, that I need to address quickly is someone made the comment that the city owned all of that land. That's not true. The Land Reutilization Commission owned that land. The Land Reutilization Commission could not do because they didn't have the statutory authority to do some of the things that we created the land bank for. So prior to the land bank taking those properties, most of those properties were owned by the Land Reutilization Commission, which has as its board, a member of the county board, a member of the Omaha Public Schools, and a member of the city council. That's who operated the Land Reutilization Commission. So with that, you know, I mean, we did something to give us more authority over some of the properties. Now, let's talk about some of these properties for a minute. And when we talk about individuals in the community and benefiting people in the community, we need to, we need, let me let you all know that a good number of the people who have purchased property from the land bank are people who are already owning property. They own side, they wanted to buy side lots, and we've sold a number of those to individuals in the community who were taking care of the side lot anyway, so they just bought it. And so a lot of those individuals are people that we have adhered to and worked with. Another gentleman that, an African-American gentleman, by the way, who bought a house from the land bank, redeveloped that house and added a business to another property that he bought right next door. So to assume that the land bank is not doing its job is foolish and wrong. Because what we're doing is providing opportunities for individuals all over this community to take part in eliminating the nearly 4,000 empty lots that we had in North Omaha for a while. Those numbers have been reduced. The other evidence that the land bank is doing its job is that when, you all know as councilmembers that regularly we have to introduce in our budget, we have to put in so much money for demolition. If you all will notice in the last two budgets, those demolition budgets have been reduced. And they've been reduced because the land bank was able to fix up, to help sell those properties, fix those properties up, put them back on the tax rolls, and this city gets money from that today. So to, again, there was so much misinformation, I can't get to all of it. One comment that was made, I made a comment tongue in cheek about, I'm gonna miss the paycheck, taken out of context. I made that comment because we get paid next to nothing, quite frankly, as councilmembers. You all know it and I know it. We get paid next to nothing. So I made a comment tongue in cheek about that. But to assume somehow that I'm causing some division in this community when I met with Councilwoman Johnson. And then to turn around and see a Facebook post, call to action, to do what? To come after me? Is that what this is about? I hope it's not. And I will be glad to take you all on a tour too and show you all the development that has occurred in North Omaha. That people don't want to recognize, that people forget about, that people don't think exists. But the fact of the matter is nearly $3 billion has been invested in North Omaha. A lot of that was a result of collaborations and efforts on the part of not just me, but members on this city council. We put those things together. I hope I answered your question. There's been so much misinformation, I can't get to it all. But the fact that you would put out on a Facebook post that call to action, to do what? What is the point of that? What was the reason for it? Oh, and let me address one other issue. We talked about qualifications. First of all, I developed the land bank, number one. Number two, it was recently done, I think it was, you would have to correct me, but I think three years ago or four years ago, the legislature made an adjustment to the land bank law and said that if one or more persons holds three or four of those qualifications, you don't have to have seven members that represent either thing, because it was too hard for us to do. So the legislature, in its wisdom, came back and said, if you have members, and we have several members who are not only in real estate, but own property, some of them are bankers, all of that, few of them are attorneys. So we had people that were qualified to do more than one thing. And the legislature recognized the difficulty in trying to get, let's say, a real estate person out of District Two and a lawyer out of District Four and a homeowner out of District Seven. And so we recognized how difficult that was. So what we did, went back to the legislature and said, we need to adjust this a little bit. We need an amendment to say that if one or more persons are qualified in more than one of the areas that are required by the land bank law, as the state put it, then you don't, you can hire, you can bring on other board members that don't necessarily have to have those qualifications. So people need to stay up on the law, first of all, so that they know when they're talking about something, that they're talking right and factual about it. And secondly, again, I'm gonna go back to saying, I've not caused any division. I've not been involved in any efforts whatsoever against Ms., Councilmember Johnson, or anybody else on this council, or anybody else, quite frankly, in this community. So I don't know what you're talking about when you're talking about division. Because I've not created any. In fact, I met with her, gave her my number, gave her my information, told her to call me when she needed anything. But then I get backstabbed with this. I'm done. Thank you all. I'll answer any questions you might have.
I understand, but I called you down. And the one point I want to make is you and I from the very beginning didn't always agree on things.
We did not. You were opposed.
The land bank was one of the things I was opposed to.
Yes.
And so I spent a great deal of time. And so, I spent a great deal of time discussing with you how to form this land bank. So, I think the fact that you participated in forming the land bank, but then were on the land bank for eight years makes you uniquely qualified to be on the land bank.
Yes, ma'am.
I also want to say, in terms of the division, again, there weren't, there were many times, probably even more so those first four years, that I think I saw you engage against Mayor Stothard in many of the things that she wanted to do versus what you wanted to do.
We had our disputes.
But what I have also seen over the last eight years is an agreement that we need to make Omaha better, and how can we work together to do that?
Yes.
And so, despite the fact that we disagreed on a number of things, or a number of, you know, we might agree on the end, but not how to get there. I've seen you build those relationships with people on the political other side, so to speak, in order to try and make things better for your district and for the city of Omaha as a whole. Because what I get a little, what I get a little tired of, we're not individual districts. I don't sit here to just make sure that the people in Northwest Omaha's District Seven are being served. That's not my job. My job is to make sure our entire city is actually being served, and that's how everybody is better off. And so, I usually look at things globally, and I mean that in our city, amongst the entire city, and not just my district. And I think the people in my district want me and expect me to do that. And I have appreciated your help over the last eight years in helping me be able to do that.
Thank you.
So, and again, over the last eight years, I've never, the mayor gets to make these appointments. This is not our appointment. Unlike other boards where the city council has a couple appointments that we make, the vast majority, this is in the mayor's purview, and it's part of the mayor's job to make the decision on who to appoint.
Correct.
And I don't think that these appointments should be political, and we should allow the mayor to make these appointments. So, with that, I do support your continuing to work on the land bank based upon the work that you've done previously. I also respect the fact that Ms. Johnson is the sitting city council member, and will be on that board. And I would like to see both of you work together, and I think both of you can work together, because you both care about the community.
I don't see any reason why we can't. Thank you.
That's what I wanted to hear. Thank you very much, Mr. Gray.
Thank you. Councilman Harding, what's your light on earlier? I know you're having a problem. Okay, Councilmember Johnson, you're recognized.
First of all, I would like to say, I appreciate all of the constituents in District Two for coming today. I'd like to appreciate Cheryl Weston for coming up to the mic and sharing her concerns about the recommendation of the mayor. And yes, the mayor does have the right to appoint whomever she wants. However, on May 11th, District Two voted in a large record number that they wanted change. They wanted change because my platform stated that I would embrace inclusion, jobs, real talk, real change. Far too long, District Two has been out of the talking position. We have lost, my community, this community, District Two, has lost hope. That's why you see here today folks ranging from 20 years old all the way up to 60 years old. Because that variation of age is very unique in itself, especially in 2021. We live in a country now where youth and seniors, they don't always agree, but yet, we have this wide range of folks here today expressing a concern about their district. They're actually engaged in the political process. Should we turn a naked eye to those folks that are engaged in the political process? Isn't that what we want? Isn't that what we want our community to want to be involved? Want to have a say? Want to pick up their bootstraps and do things? We just had a storm. District Two went out. We're, over 60% of the homes in District Two have no power, yet, and no money. I mean, on top of that, no power, no money. But yet, we came together and lifted each other up to provide food for those that did not have food. Again, these are historical moments that we're seeing activity in District Two. Should we ignore that activity? Should we ignore the mobilization of people talking, sharing, working together? Should we ignore that? I say not. I say all the comments that we've had here today were very impactful. They were impactful and passionate, because people have literally lost hope in District Two. Something has to change. On May 11th, they said that I was that change. They also said here today that they was concerned that perhaps I was not a part of the process in which the selection was made for this person on the land bank board. They also shared that, would there be a possible conflict? These are all normal things that anybody would have, all concerns an average person would have. I, too, share in those concerns. We're not abnormal. They would happen to anyone. So, my vote today is to, I move that we vote this down. That's my move. I motion to disregard and vote this down. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilman Harding, you're recognized.
She made a motion. Do you want to?
There could be a second at any time.
So, there's a motion and a second?
Right.
Is that right? Okay. So, I can, but now I can still speak? So, I've learned a lot from Ben, not only being on city council, but in our prior experiences while he worked at Channel Seven, and when I worked in the mayor's office previously. I think Ben is extremely qualified for this, as Councilmember Melton has explained. I also find it interesting that, I think it was Pastor Perkins, who I think is out of the room now, unfortunately, talked about bringing us together and not dividing us. And he also said that he hoped that the present elected official and immediate past elected official can work together. And I've heard Ben say he can do that. I'm sure Ms. Johnson would say the same thing. And I can think of no way better to start that journey. And I've heard, too, with due respect to Councilmember Johnson, saying that she was duly elected on May 11th. And yes, she was. And so was Mayor Stothard. And this is Mayor Stothard's appointment. And in her estimation, and it's her prerogative to send to us her recommendation as to who she thinks can be a good person, good representative, to serve on the land bank. And that's how I'm going to vote.
Thank you. Councilman Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. And of course, my second was, because I believe every motion, or not every, but most of them at least should be voted on. Gosh, who would have thought we'd have had this discussion over a land bank appointment? I, too, have had questions about the land bank, and it hasn't been on solid ground for a majority of the time I've been on the council. I remember having the discussion in the Southeast Precinct, and I didn't have a representative. And I didn't know I didn't have one. So, I was disappointed by that. Have we made strides? Absolutely. Do I have the utmost respect for former Councilmember Ben Gray? I absolutely do. Do I think he's fully qualified? Looking at the list of names and knowing some of them names on there, he's more qualified than they are. That's just the truth. But I gotta respect the council member that I serve with. And I wanted to hear from Councilmember Johnson to hear what you had to say, whether you laid it over, whether you went with it, or the way you were gonna vote. And it has nothing to do with the person. I know this is the mayor's appointment, but I don't always agree with the mayor. I don't have to. I'm the legislative branch here. Again, nothing to do with former Councilmember Gray. He is overqualified for this. But the land bank's got some problems. And as I look at the map, there's a lack of properties in South Omaha. Why don't, why aren't we working more within the whole city? I've asked this for four years. So, maybe a shuffle's necessary. Maybe some appointments need to be changed around. So, with that, again, I mean, if we sit here and we have a liquor license, and you're not against it, but the council member in that area says, "Hey, you know, there's some issues with this, and maybe you don't know about it," sometimes we side with that council member, even though, you know, we're not directly involved. So, out of respect for who I serve with now, I'll be voting against this appointment. Thank you.
Thank you. I will add a few comments, and then we'll see if there's any additional lights before we act upon the motion and the second. I agree with many of the testifiers today that say Omaha needs North Omaha. Omaha absolutely does need North Omaha. And Omaha needs a united North Omaha. And that's especially true as it applies to the land bank. One testifier, I think, said about 50% of its properties are in North Omaha. I think it's more like 80 or 90% right now. And that's why, with the council's appointment, we did appoint Councilmember Johnson. That's not designated as a council District Two spot, but we saw that as an important thing to do, given all the things I just described in the land bank's involvement in that area. I also agree with Councilmember Melton's comments in terms of qualifications. I believe Councilmember Gray is qualified. There's, on our agenda every week, including today, at least half of our agenda items are involved with economic development and community development, and real estate development, and zoning, and replating, and all those things that the land bank does deal with. And he did that for 12 years. So, I think there's no question he is qualified. Mr. Gray, I have one question for you, though, if you might come down as pertains to the incomplete information or the incomplete box on the applicant's, candidate's worksheet.
Yes.
Your name and address, just for the record.
Ben Gray, 6946 North 54th Street.
Thank you. The comment was made on the application to the mayor's office, the box that says you have no conflicts was not checked, and it wasn't. So, I just wanted to clarify with you that what I believe to be probably a consulting entity, BG Gray Associates,
Consulting, yes.
Would not have any conflicts with the land bank's activities.
No.
Thank you. Now, having said that, Mr. Warren, if you would, just for one moment. And your name again, please.
Thomas Warren, mayor's office, 1819 Farnum Street.
Thank you. I think a clear message we are hearing here today is that there's a desire for new ideas, expanded leadership in city boards and commissions, younger representation, amongst other things, including folks that have not been included before. And I think that's a very legitimate observation and one we should be pursuing. I think it's probably one you agree with. I wanted to give you a chance to address that, because I think one of your charges as chief of staff, and I know it's one of the charges of Keith Station in the mayor's office, is to pursue our city boards and commissions. There are literally dozens of appointments that the mayor makes throughout the city that could expand our reach and include additional representation throughout our community. And I know we need to further diversify our boards and commissions by erasing gender and any other number of criteria. So, I wanted to give you a chance to address that and affirm your commitment to that.
Sure. And I think you just described the mayor's commitment not only to solicit input from our elected officials, making recommendations to boards and commissions, but she does want the boards and commissions to be more representative of the city of Omaha, race, gender, ethnicity, et cetera, geographic area, as Councilwoman Melton mentioned. The mayor was reelected. She represents the entire city. She was overwhelmingly reelected. And this appointment by no means was the intent to create division. In fact, she felt that Ben Gray was uniquely qualified for the appointment to the land bank and would make an excellent candidate based on his experience. And so, that's the mayor's intent, to identify the individuals that are best qualified to serve in these positions, to appoint them accordingly, so they can function in support of city government. But certainly, in listening to the testimony, reasonable people can respectfully disagree, but we do feel that this is the appropriate candidate for this position. But certainly, would encourage individuals, if they are interested in the various boards and commissions, to make application.
Thank you. And it is the mayor's prerogative to make these appointments, almost all of them. But I don't disagree. We should have a critical lens on them going forward and have these conversations and make sure that is occurring as a body when they come to us, because there is an appointment or two, it seems, at least every other week on our city council agenda that we can also assist with, I think. And with that, I'll recognize Councilman Bailey.
Thanks. Thank you, Mr. President. So, sitting here as a new elected council member, listening to the presentation and the passionate testimony that was given, one thing that just popped into my mind was, had Mr. Gray been afforded to rally people to come and speak on his behalf, I would suspect there would be a lot of people here speaking for him as well. So, I want to recognize that. I believe Councilman Gray's been a noble public servant. And in this arena, it's hard. Democracy is a hard thing. Bodies like us are elected to make decisions, to put people on boards. The mayor put her candidate forward. And listening to my colleagues, and I believe that if we make a decision today without thoughtful deliberation, I don't think we're doing a good service. So, with that said, I'm gonna vote with Congress, or with Councilmember Johnson, that I would like to see the mayor put a different candidate forward to this board after we vote, if it's not affirmed. So, and again, it has nothing to do with Mr. Ben Gray. Again, I think he's been a very good public servant, but North Omaha has spoken. And if there's another candidate comes down that we can vote on after today, then I'll look forward to doing that. Thank you.
Thank you. There are no further lights. There's a motion and a second to deny. Roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Roll call.
Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed four to three.
Thank you for your testimony. Next item.
Item 46 through 48 can be considered together for the 2021 annexation package, ordinances to annex Whispering Ridge, SID 549, North Ridge, SID 560, and a portion of the Grove Village Point Lodging, SID 438.
The votes on items number 46, 47, and 48 are today. Is there a motion?
Why? For this?
One minute, please. I've got a point of clarification here.
I was just advised that the last vote required a two-thirds vote for the land bank. Okay, so that motion would have failed. So, the motion to deny would have been approved?
So, Mr. Cousy, if you would, just address that for us.
Man, Cousy, City of Omaha Law Department, Section 2-238 of the code says- Man, Cousy, City of Omaha Law Department, Section 2-238 of the code says seven voting members appointed by the mayor and confirmed by a two-thirds vote of the council. This is for a voting spot. So the vote requires a two-thirds majority in order to be approved.
So then in effect, both motions have failed.
I'll defer to the clerk on the numbers, but if the motion to deny did not have a two-thirds majority, then that failed. And if the motion to approve also failed, then we're still at square one.
Six, 47, and 48. Withdrawing that motion.
And I'll withdraw my second on that.
And then just to confirm that was correct process, Mr. Clerk and Ms. Mister Cousy.
Yep.
Okay.
Supermajority vote of five.
All right, so we're back on number 45. There's been a motion and a second to approve that item. I'll recognize Councilmember Johnson.
We deny.
We already did a motion.
What do I need to do?
Mr. President, I have a question. How many times are we gonna vote on this both ways? Okay, sorry. The motion was to approve in a second. Thank you, Mr. President.
Yep. Any other questions for the process at this point? Mr. Bagley.
Help me, do we vote all night until we get this candidate approved then? Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Palermo.
It's on for a motion.
Okay, thank you.
Disregard.
All right, there's a motion to approve in a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Palermo.
No.
Rowe. Bagley.
No.
Harding. Johnson. Milton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion failed four to three.
For... Three, three weeks, four weeks? Four weeks?
You can't do three.
Two?
You could do two.
I make a motion to lay over item, agenda item number 45 for two weeks. We're obviously out of stalemate. We've had a long day. The city's had a long week. This is a land bank appointment. We got business to take care of. We're gonna lay this over for a couple of weeks unless it gets denied, and we'll vote all night. And I can do that, so that's my motion.
Okay. They're laying over to the 27th.
Do you guys wanna keep, do you guys wanna keep vote?
So for councilmembers' knowledge, just ask Mr. Cousy a question. A layover or even to put something on file does not require a supermajority, only a majority, just for your knowledge.
Okay, then I will keep with my... Yeah, I'll stay with that. We're gonna lay, or my motion's to lay agenda, agenda item 45 over for two weeks, based on the fact that I could clearly see we are out of stalemate. We will not get three-fourths on this today. So vote your conscience. Thank you, Mr. President.
There's a motion and a second? Or was there a second? Mr. Rowe? Okay. Motion and a second? Roll call.
Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. This is to lay over. Harding. Johnson. Milton. Mr. President.
I'm sorry, is it three, three on this one right now?
It's three, three right now.
I'll vote four. We gotta move on and address this at the next meeting.
It's four to three.
Four to three for a layover.
Items 46 through 48 can be considered together for the 2021 annexation package ordinances to annex Whispering Ridge West SID 549, North Ridge SID 560, and a portion of the Grove Village Point Lodging SID 438. The Villas of Omaha Butler Ridge and adjacent land, Plating Board and Planning Department recommend approval.
Thank you. There's a motion and a second. No further lights. Roll call.
Palermo.
Oh, I'm sorry. Mr. Palermo, you're recognized if you'd like to speak.
Yeah, thank you, thank you. New agenda item, here we go. Anyway, the annexation, a couple of weeks ago, I left everybody with a task of, ask yourself if we as a city can take on more lane miles and more parks and more people and more trash instead of building up, building out. And then Friday night, we had a devastating windstorm coming to town. We have parts of this city, north, south, east, and west, so that covers the whole city, that we can't get to as a city, to open roads, to reconnect power, to make sure people are getting fed. I understand this is a small package, but it'll be just like the rest of the packages in the past where I voted no against annexation unless they were net positive. In this particular case, in this particular year, I will be voting no against this whole annexation package. Just a reminder, because it was two weeks ago. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
I will state that, and we heard this morning, that this was a historic storm, at least as it relates to the number of households, in excess of 190,000 in OPBD's jurisdiction, which obviously is a little more than Omaha. But if you look at the response and getting people back online, and I know some people are still without, and I was without until late yesterday evening, but nonetheless, I think the, we've demonstrated that we as a community do come together and make those, make those things happen. I don't think that this annexation package is gonna put any more strain on our ability to do so going forward either, so I'll be supportive of it.
Thank you. Mr. Palermo?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. President, for clarification. I certainly wasn't taking away the hard work by everybody out there trying to put our city back together, but it was a reminder that as we annex, we grow the city in every single department. Now, I could sit here all night and go director by director and ask them if this would intensify the resources that they don't already have on all aspects of an annexation. And they're gonna tell me they can do it, but the point is, it's extra work. The reason we're on 12-hour shift for city employees is because we are in a, well, once in every 20-year situation. But the other reason they're gonna be working so long and things are gonna be the way they are for so long is because we don't have enough city employees across the board. We don't have enough public safety. Chief Schmodder's here, and I'm sure he could tell you how many police officers had to sit in their car and block down wires. You're gonna add more wires? You're gonna add more lane miles? There's a motion. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you. I would just add before we vote that I always have supported what I would call measured annexation and haven't been shy to vote against certain areas that I didn't think were measured annexation in the past. I agree with many of the points that Councilman Palermo's making in that respect. But when we do have a package that is financially positive and contiguous to our boundaries and that does account for city services in an efficient manner, those are my three criteria. This is the smallest package I think I've seen in 12 years. So both in terms of territory and in terms of population, but I think it is at a sensitive time for city services throughout the community, but because of those things, that's why I'll be supporting it today. There's a motion and a second to approve. No further lights. Roll call.
Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Milton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed five to two. Item 49, a resolution to approve the City of Omaha Park Rules, A is communications in opposition, B is amendment of the whole requested by the Parks Department.
Thank you. We've postponed a couple of times now the public hearing and vote on this item for further work. We now have an amendment of the whole prepared by Director Kalsovich, and he's here to present that today.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members of the city council, Matt Kalsovich, Parks Recreation and Public Property Director. I'll start with a recap of a process we've gone through over the last few weeks. In the interest of working to meet the community's evolving needs, I've submitted the proposed amendment to the park rules for city council review. Most of these rules have been in place for many years and have served the community well. However, it is critical to continue monitoring their effectiveness and adapt as needed to changes in the community and the parks and recreation industry. Our goals in presenting these to the city council were to evaluate equitable service, education to the public, and ensure the successful ability to monitor and manage the use of our facilities and spaces. Over the last month, we had a condensed but detailed process to produce what is being recommended, most specifically concerning the request for 24-hour trail access. This would be a focus on commuters and people using alternative forms of transportation. I'll highlight a few of the areas in which we did our additional research. First, with safety. We had additional discussions with the Omaha Police Department, and I want to thank Chief Schmodder and his team for dedicating their time to discussions that we had and the review of our proposal. It was deemed something that was appropriate and could be evaluated and charted over the next year to assess any challenges or issues with the concept. National data is limited, but there was nothing overwhelming in terms of negative feedback to give us pause on the activation of these new policies in places where a similar concept has been implemented. Evaluating the impact to, or potential impact on surrounding communities, staff communicated with Papillion, La Vista, Bellevue, and Council Bluffs, who were in support of the proposed changes and did not see any challenges or negative in regards to what they currently implement, even though what we're presenting does not necessarily match or is identical to these other communities, we did not see a conflict or an issue. We evaluated several peer communities. Many of those we referenced regionally and nationally, including Minneapolis, Denver, Chicago, Boulder, and Park City, have implemented various specific parameters for trail use similar to what we have presented. We reviewed recommendations and best practices based on their experience to incorporate what we have already identified as the unique situations in our trail network. Several of these cities have also isolated trail hours away from other facilities like we have proposed. We worked with some of the advocacy groups, most specifically Mode Shift and Bike Walk Nebraska, who during the meeting on June 15th expressed some of their interest in seeing this change and some of their concerns. They have offered their support of the amendment and expressed a positive sentiment about how the biking community will receive it. I want to thank Julie Harris from Bike Walk Nebraska and Sarah Johnson from Mode Shift for their time to discuss and assess what we proposed. Evaluating some expanded concerns, we verified that neither e-bikes or e-scooters exceeded the sound ordinance regulations for the city, with both being rated at a lower level than is allowed on the street by cars or motorcycles. In many cases, the trails adjacent to homes are no closer than the street, also directly adjacent to a property. A few other items that the Parks and Recreation Department incorporated into our review is first signage. A comprehensive review is being conducted now with modifications to several features of our current signage are being discussed. A plan to purchase and install new signs in a way that allows us, for any future updates, and at an expense that is reasonable and manageable is our focus, and that will complement any potential approval, the approval of the potential proposed changes. We will, as mentioned in the June 15th meeting, conduct a comprehensive review of these rules and the specific changes, trail hours, types of use, drone regulations, and certainly all the rules on an annual basis. As I previously mentioned, we will bring any of those recommendations to council with information about why those are being proposed, but potentially and ideally, things will function in a way that we may not need to bring anything to you for a while, hopefully with what we projected hitting the mark. And then as far as our future assessment or continued assessment is concerned, we will work with both the Omaha Police Department and the mayor's hotline to chart and review any concerns about the park rules and these changes to our policies. Many incidents are dealt with in real time, and our staff with the Parks and Recreation Department will compile all data to accompany any proposed future action. With that being said, I'll walk you through a few of the specifics of the amendment, most specifically in Section 1, park closing, and Letter A. The multi-use, shared-use paved trails will remain open for 24 hours a day with the purpose of supporting these, those commuting or selecting a trail as their main mode of transportation. We added some elements to this that we believe really help define what our expectations are and are the parameters we would like to see people or expect people to abide by when functioning during these later hours. First and foremost, trail users must follow all Nebraska bicycle laws and trail guidelines for safety. That's absolutely a main focus of any change in our policy or procedure, is how this will affect people in terms of being safe on their uses of our trails or facilities. Use of these trails at any time is an at-your-own-risk activity, and users must take all precautions during every use, whether that's in these later hours that are being proposed to be included in what is accessible on our trails, or during some of the hours that have existed already. We thought that was imperative and critical to include. And we also added the trail users during the hours of 11:00 PM and 5:00 AM should not stop, park, or gather in parks or other areas closed to activity, as the park areas and other features and amenities of the park will still be closed from 11:00 PM to 5:00 AM. But as it was pointed out in our earlier discussion, and thank you, Councilmember Rowe, for indicating that we did evaluate things down to the level of actually looking at terms and verbiage, and the word "should" exists in that last statement, because we know there will be emergencies and circumstances like injuries, flat tires, things of those nature that will allow people to stop, tend to those items, and continue on with how we're opening up the opportunity for them to do so. We also made one adjustment in Letter B in regards to the speed limit on park roads, and this has been our standard, but it's something we wanted to emphasize, again, in the spirit of shared or multi-use, or those roads being a way during our normal park hours to access the amenities and features of the park, that the roads that you see here listed as specific roads highlighted as being accessible 24 hours a day would, this would include a standard 20 mile-per-hour speed limit, and that's any or all park road, whether it's these indicated or others that would access those amenities. With that, I would like to, again, express my thanks for the extension on presenting this back to the council and for your support of our effort to reasonably and responsibly progress with our policies. I'm happy to answer any questions you might have about the amendment at this time.
Thank you. We may have some. I think we technically have continued the public hearing today, so I do want to complete that process as well. If there's any others here that want to speak in favor of number 49 and 49B, please come down.
Sarah Johnson, 2316 North 52nd Street. I'll keep this super brief. Thank you to everybody. It looks good. I'm speaking on behalf of myself, not Mode Shift, but I know that Mode Shift also thinks it looks good, and we're grateful for the layover and just the relationship that we're starting with the Parks Director. We're really just like looking forward to creating and maintaining and building that relationship, so thank you. Looks good.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Hey, peace. Manny, Manuel Cook, representing Spark, 2514 North 24th Street, fabric project, to be exact. And I'm just very appreciative for keeping the trails open 24 hours, because, you know, people are always talking about, you know, multimodal and such like that, and then people get thrown off of what that is, but that includes walking, so we don't want to criminalize walking, so thank you. And this is a much easier call than earlier, so thank you again.
Thanks. We look forward to seeing your trail open, too. Other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents. Public hearing's closed. Mr. Harding.
Thank you, Mr. President. Matt, I want to, you can come up if you'd like. I might not ask you a question. I might just heap praise on you, but thank you for your openness and willingness to refine this. I think the first time this actually came down to us in its first forum was well before you were here. It was well over a year ago, but I appreciate your work on this to get it to where we are today. it to where we are today, and that's one of the points I want to make, is where we are today, because this is, this is not something where we've hit the finish line and we're done. I think especially as it relates to some of these new forms of transportation, new technologies, et cetera, I think we need to be, remain nimble and aware of how these rules, if they pass in this form, how they work, and we need to be flexible and understand that they may need some adjustments as we go along, and that, most of those comments are probably related to the trails. I think the rest of them, we pretty much were in agreement all along the way, but I think we need to understand that. One of the issues that I still have a little angst about is allowing the scooters on the trails. I do know that, you know, that certainly in those scooters, we could geofence those off, and that's maybe something that, again, we can be aware of as we go along with this, but currently, just, I want to remind people that scooters couldn't be on there at 2:00 in the morning or 4:00 in the morning, because the scooters only are available for operation, I think, from 5:00 AM till 10:00, 10:30, or something like that. So, I want to, again, appreciate the hard work that you've done, your outreach to some of the constituencies that have expressed a lot of interest in this, the users of it, and I'll be supportive of this now, but I want to make sure that people understand that I'm open to suggestions and further tweaks as we go along. So, thank you for your work.
Thank you.
Thank you. I too want to thank you for your work and for bringing all interested parties together over a long period of time to, I think, get this right today, and I think it sends the right message that our trails, we should encourage, not discourage, multimodal transit on all of our trail systems, and I think that's what this does. Thank you. Roll call.
Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
And just to clarify, that was a motion for the amendment of the whole? Okay. Motion passed seven to zero.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item 50, a resolution to approve an amendment to the City Council, Rules of Order to Amend Rule 11, Section C, to include a process for waiving the requirement to provide an address at City Council meetings.
Thank you. The public hearing on number 50 is today for councilmembers' notes. This does require a supermajority of councilmembers to be approved. That's a little bit of joke, that's a joke after a long day. And I will say, I worked with the city clerk and councillor Endenbosch here on this to be complying with a recent change in state law, so I wanted to give Mr. Endenbosch a chance to present this briefly to the council.
Thank you. Bernard Endenbosch, Deputy City Attorney, 1819 Farnham Street. Obviously, this is an amendment of the rules that was prepared jointly or in conjunction with the city clerk, and it's been something we've been discussing for some time. And prior to the amendment that was adopted by the legislature this year in 84-1412, subsection 3, it allowed a body, a public body, to require people to provide their names and addresses. It was permissive. It was not required that you do so, but this City Council historically has had part of their rules requiring individuals who wanted to address this body to identify both their name and address. LB 83 that was adopted this year changed that language from permissive to mandatory, so now it requires anybody testifying before a public body to identify their name, address, and then any organization that they may be representing to that body. But it did provide a limitation, and this limitation, I'll talk a little bit about it, that you could adopt, you could waive the ability to provide an address if it is to protect the security of the individual that's testifying. So that was the language that's in the statute. You don't have to allow for a waiver, but it allows you to allow for a waiver for people who are worried about having their signal, their security protected. And as far as the waiver requirement, there's nothing in the legislative history that provided much direction as to where it came from. It was not in the original version of the bill. It originated from a request, apparently from Douglas County, who is concerned about crime victims and domestic violence victims who do occasionally testify before their body, the Douglas County Board of Commissioners, and they didn't want to have to have those people identify their address, and that's very understandable. So with that background, the city clerk and I talked a little bit about establishing a process where we could do a waiver without requiring the council to vote every time someone requested a waiver, and/or having to have that discussion, maybe where the City Council Chair would do it. The feeling was maybe we would try to emulate or follow the process that we're using for people who want to appear by video. So we've kind of established the, this rule adapts an amendment that establishes that process for people who want to, or are concerned about providing their address to the council. They can go in and provide, fill out a short application, providing a basis for the security reason, attesting to the truth of that particular item, and providing that information to the city clerk by the day before the test, before they testify before the council, and it allows the city clerk to review that and then determine whether or not it meets the standard, and I understand, I mean, they have to attest to the truth, and it just really has to be something that meets that particular standard in the statute, and once that waiver is provided, then when, if that person were to come speak before the council, they would obviously have to identify their name, but would not have to identify their address. We would have on record in the city clerk's office the address, so we still have that information if needed, but we would try to keep that from being public and take every effort to do so. So we tried to come up with a reasonable process to allow the council to take in mind that people might feel vulnerable or may not want to provide their address for security reasons, as the statute contemplated, but also to keep consistent with this council's past practice of requiring people to identify themselves by name and address. So, I just wanted you, Mr. Festerson asked that I give a short presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions, if you have any.
And in practice, that's each week, and also applies to folks that are registering over Zoom, right?
Correct.
Correct. Thanks.
Thank you.
There may be some questions. First, we'll take any proponents today.
Deshaun Cunningham, 821, Willshire Boulevard, Los Angeles. I definitely agree with this. I have been somebody that actually has had stalkers, people harass me. Part of that is, and I'm sure as you all can understand, being a public official, that's part of the territory, but with some of the work I do in particular in regards to the police department, I have had special efforts at being targeted, and some of those I was able to trace back from giving my address at City Council meetings over the past year, few years. Another thing that came up as a member of Councilwoman Johnson's Task Force on Violence was, we were talking about ways to get people to come down to city government that would not necessarily want to share that information for the reasons Mr. Endenbosch listed, being criminals or considered rival gang members, so I've just actually never thought it was really necessary. Maybe we could say something like district we're from, if it, if it really has to be that big of a deal, but there is a chilling effect when certain people dealing with certain things in our community are asked to come up and give their home address, so I would be a proponent of this change.
Thank you. Next proponent.
Sarah Johnson, 2316 North 52nd Street. Basically echoing a lot of what Deshaun just said, I personally, you know, have been up here a million times and have said my address, and I'm okay with that, but there are a lot of folks who, whether it is domestic violence or police issues, or just like, maybe they are homeless, like, there's just, I think that as a council, it would be a good idea to just reduce the barriers to participation however you can, and I think that this is a really great way to do that and to show, I mean, also, Deshaun's address is in LA, so like, what is the point of having to give your address unless, you know, you want to follow up, in which case that's on us to provide a way for you to get in touch with us if we have questions? Since we can't ask questions of you here, that makes sense, but I think the default should be, you don't need to state your address. Maybe it's something where we submit it to the clerk or something like that, but it, staying out of public record, I think, is crucial, and I think that, yeah, if there could be, not even necessarily just a waiver, but again, the default to not be to state your address for all of the reasons that we've been discussing, would be great. Thank you.
Thank you. Next proponent.
Scott Blake, 2316 North 52nd Street. I did a little bit of research. OPPD board meeting does not require addresses. That's the default. If they want to get back in touch with you, you can leave an email with the clerk, and then also at the state level, you do not have to provide your address at the unicameral. And then one more thing, when I, as I just provided my address, the journal or the minutes of this will then go onto the journal. That journal is then indexed by Google, and so not only am I giving my address here today on YouTube in front of you, it then becomes public record on Google. So, there's, I know on Twitter, you're not, it's called doxing, you're not allowed, you're not allowed to give someone's address so that they can send thugs to come and harass you, but we do that every single time. And just as a note, Festerson, you missed, I think, two, I counted two addresses that were missed today, so it seems to be inconsistent, but I support this, and I think it should be the default to not give an address. Thank you.
Next proponent, please. Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Mr. Harding, you're recognized.
I had one quick question, Bernard. It's just... I'm making the assumption, but I want to make sure that we, make sure it's clear within the, what we're voting on, where it says a new form must be submitted before each City Council meeting, but if an individual is speaking on more than one item at an individual meeting, which happens frequently here, they do not have to, they only have to submit one per meeting, and there, and then for each subsequent time at the podium, they don't have to give an address. We'll just acknowledge that it's already stated on file. Is that how we do that?
Bernard Endenbosch, Deputy City Attorney, 1819 Farnham Street. That would be my expectation, that you fill it out in form, you do identify on the form the items that you're going to testify on, on the form.
That would be on the form, then?
That is on the form that has been prepared, and I would, I just want to point out, the state law does now make it mandatory that an individual testifying before a public body provide their name, address, and any organization they're represented. That didn't used to be the case, but it became effective in late April of this year, and there may be some public bodies that haven't quite caught up to the statute yet.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. No further lights. I'll just make one comment, also thanking city clerk Eliza Butler for her work on this, and see if she had any comments or things she'd like to add to the testimony today or things folks should know should they engage this process when this goes into effect.
We will put the form on our website. We will also put a link on our agenda, and they are just due 4:30 PM Monday before the meeting.
Thank you. Motion, a second. Roll call.
Palermo. Rowe. Bagley. Harding. Johnson. Melton. Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero.
Item 51, an ordinance levying a special tax and assessment in all lots and pieces of real estate within Road Maintenance District 2019-08.
Public hearing on number 51 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 52, an ordinance levying a special tax and assessment in all lots and pieces of real estate within Road Maintenance District 2019-09.
Public hearing on number 52 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 53, an ordinance levying a special tax and assessment in all lots and pieces of real estate within Street Improvement District 6882.
Public hearing on number 53 is today. Are there any proponents? Any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 54, an ordinance to approve the Trio 15th and Farnham Tax Increment Financing Redevelopment Agreement.
Public hearing on number 54 is today. Proponents, Mr. Seaton.
Good afternoon, Don Seaton, Omaha City Planning, 1819 Farnham, and I'm here for any questions you may have.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 55, an ordinance to approve an agreement with the Omaha Police Department, the Behavioral Health Support Foundation, and the Omaha Police Foundation to continue to fund the co-responder.
Public hearing on number 55 is today. Proponents, please. Spang.
Deputy Chief Michelle Bang, Omaha Police Department. I'm here as a proponent. This just transitions the program from the Lutheran Family Services employment to the City of Omaha employment, and I'm here for any questions.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Deshaun Cunningham, 821, Willshire Boulevard, Los Angeles. I am very much in support of this. Some of you newer councilmembers may not recognize me, but some of you older ones definitely know I have been very critical of improving our police department. This particular ordinance and initiative stems from some of the work that Chief Schmader and I have engaged in over a period of eight, nine years, whatever it's been, so, as probably the biggest police critic in town, I actually really support this and would like to see this endeavor continue and eventually evolve into something where we're maybe not entirely using Uniform Patrol Bureau officers to respond to mental health needs, nonviolent misdemeanors, things of that nature. These things are always part of our continual process improvements, but I stand here today and support this ordinance. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Deputy Chief Bang, I might just engage you for one second on it. I'm very supportive of this, too, and always have been. The unit now is fully staffed, right? All four precincts and...
Correct.
With civilian responders, as well as, or five, I'm sorry, as well as with the officer structure now that manages those civilian employees.
So, the, it is. So I actually manage the unit directly. A co-responder, a mental health coordinator, Lindsay Kroll, manages the co-responders, and then a sergeant reports directly to me and manages an officer. So, based on the nature of our contract and how our organization functions, sworn personnel do not report to non-sworn just because of the law enforcement component of our jobs.
Thank you. And I think this is an important service and unit we have to have in the police department for crisis situations, but I agree, this isn't the only thing we should be doing in this area. We should have more mobile services offered to the community. I know there are some providers that are working on that, Community Alliance for one, to offer more civilian support and professional support in instances of mental health that shouldn't be responded to by our police officers, in cooperation with this unit going forward. And right now, it is entirely privately funded, but what this contract will do was, is continue that shift to entirely city-funded operations by 2024, I believe.
Correct. Actually, the mental health coordinator, her position will be funded by the budget starting next year, and then 50% of the co-responders, the five co-responders, will be budgeted in 2023, and then in 2024, we take ownership of the program.
Great. And I want to thank the private funders who have made that possible, and we'll look for it in the 2022 budget.
Excellent.
All right.
Thank you.
Mr. Bagley, you're recognized.
Thanks, Mr. President. Just a quick comment. In the campaign that I knocked on doors and talked to people, this was overwhelmingly talked about at doors on why I supported law enforcement, specifically, especially for this. Mental health, and in talking to the chief in our committee meeting a couple of weeks ago, mental health even opened his eyes, I won't speak for the chief, but that's my read what he said in that meeting, on how much of a crisis the community's in and how much need there is for this, the co-responders, so I think this is a tremendous opportunity for our city, and I really applaud the police department for working with others and make sure, and the foundations that are helping the city with the financing on this. I think this is terrific. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will make sure that our funders are aware of your comments, sir.
Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
I just wanted to echo the sentiment of Mr. Bagley. This is a step in the right direction. Mental health is very much a big crisis all over Omaha, Nebraska. I see homeless individuals throughout District 2. It's really something that we need to address as a community, so yes, I'm in full support of this.
Excellent. And I do want to assure you that we do collaborate with all of our community partners on a regular basis, so...
Thanks for your work. I think I already did close public hearing, and we'll move on to the next item.
Item 56, an ordinance to approve an amendment to the Fire and Emergency Services Agreement with the Millard Suburban Fire Protection District, number one.
Public hearing on number 56 is today. Proponents, please.
My name is Jeff Farnham, Law Firm of Farnham &amp; Griffin, 220 North 89th Street, Omaha, Nebraska. I'm the attorney for the Millard Suburban Fire District. I'm here with Chief Kevin Edwards, simply to answer any questions you might have. I'm here with Chief Kevin Edwards, simply to answer any questions you might have.
Thank you. Any other proponents on 56 today?
Bernard Enden Bosch, Deputy City Attorney, 1819 Farnham Street. I worked with Jeff Farnham on this particular amendment. Chief Olson was at the pre-council meeting this morning. He's in support of it, and he was there to answer any questions, and I told him it was probably not necessary for him to come today, but if he had any questions, we would make sure that he was available for next week. So I'm happy to answer any questions as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Other proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 57, in ordinance to create Section 23-537 of Chapter 23 of the Omaha Municipal Code to create a 6% specialty pay for an executive deputy chief of police personnel board recommends approval.
Public hearing on number 57 is today. Chief Schmodder, please come down. Thanks for sticking with us.
So I was going to say good afternoon. I now say good evening. Todd Schmodder, Chief of Police, City of Omaha, 505 South 15th Street. I am here to ask for approval for an executive deputy chief position as I feel it will increase accountability within the Omaha Police Department, both inside and outside in our community. Couple of points I'll make at the onset. This is not an additional position. One of the current deputy chiefs will assume this role along with their current duties, so when you look at personnel, it is a neutral. There is no budget increase that I'm asking for. Our current budget will absorb the cost. So when you look at the, the budget increase, that is also a neutral. I am a firm believer in accountability to the public, and with over 1,100 employees with the Omaha Police Department, a clearly identified number two will streamline operations in my absence and provide an extra layer of accountability to the department. There are currently six ranks directly below me. There are five deputy chiefs and one civilian deputy director who oversees a lot of the technology within our department. So when you add those six plus me, that is seven, just like the city council is comprised of seven, there's a president and a vice president. You will often see that as span of control starts to spread out. If our bodies only had three or four, you probably wouldn't see me up here today. Some agencies have a designated number two, some don't. It's kind of a individual city type of thing. At this point in time, I prefer the extra layer of accountability. I prefer to lead on this matter rather than follow any other trends. As we looked around the country, we saw some that did, some that didn't. I feel this extra position would have been beneficial during the PROTEX activities Omaha had last year and with other large events. It will assist with some personnel matters and with mentoring the newer deputy chiefs that would inevitably come, come out. In addition, when I'm gone, this position will be clear acting chief, just like when the council president is gone, we know who the vice president is. It's not a guessing game. So in summary, I'm simply looking at the benefits of increased accountability and efficiency of operations for the Omaha Police Department, again, in its personnel and cost neutral to our budget. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other proponents today?
Deshaun Cunningham, 821, Willshire Boulevard, Los Angeles. I support this. This was actually brought to my attention a number of months ago that Todd was planning to spend additional funds, and I think the way it was reported to me, there was some misunderstanding about making a new position, things of that nature, but in my meetings with Chief Schmodder, pretty much everything he said was relayed to me. This isn't something I have a problem supporting. It's not any additional money going to the police that isn't going to have to come from somewhere else. There is a problem when there is a breakdown in the chain of communication in regards to things like large demonstrations. That comes back to accountability with the police department. So this is only, I think it only amounts to about $8,000 a year that we would be spending to have this clearly delineated chain of command, so I think that is something that all of Omaha could benefit from, so I stand here as a proponent.
Thank you. Any other proponents today? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed. Councilman Palermo, you're recognized.
Thank you, Mr. President. Chief, if you could, please.
Chief Schmodder, 505 South 15th.
Thanks for hanging with us, chief. So obviously, this is nothing new to the council. Well, we filed it away, so we had at least discussed it before within public safety, some separate meetings as well, where you and I agreed to disagree. I've asked a lot of questions of law, Mr. Enden Bosch. I appreciate your responses. Hopefully, my colleagues got those responses on some basic questions, because I'm certainly not against what you choose in your department. I think we have one of the best departments. It was the process of the decision, because regardless of how this vote goes next week, your hardest decision is going to be what deputy chief to pick, because they're all really good, and I'm not saying that because Chief Kang is back there, although he's looking at me. So a lot of the questions I had got answered, but part of the ordinance, especially when you're into CBAs, that I, I read and I just can't understand, it, it's the part of when we change a municipal code involving the CBA. And I had a lot of questions. This is a civil service protected job, because the mayor's elected who appointed you, and now you're appointed somebody, let's make sure, you know, down the road, a lot of people know where they're going. But there's one part in here, and it says there's a change in the, the CBA between the City of Omaha and the Police Managers Association. The Police Managers Association is a bargaining group, which includes you, the police chief, and the deputy police chiefs. Now, I had asked Bernard earlier in pre-council, but you weren't there. Was there a vote taken within your CBA with police management on if this position was needed?
So there was no vote taken. As chief, I analyzed everything that we had going in the city. I analyzed where we were at, and I'm constantly looking for ways to improve. We just came off a very hard year, and as I was analyzing that year, and I was analyzing and discussing with other chiefs around the country, discussing with some of my mentees, I mentor as deputy chiefs from all across this country. I talk about various things, see what they do in their agencies. As I looked at that, and I looked at some of the issues that we had in our city, I decided that the accountability and the efficiency of operations was something that I wanted, and I did not put that to a vote.
Okay. Thank you. And I heard something today from Director Sanders that I didn't know before, but we always ask this regardless of what it is, what are other comparable cities doing, or what have they done, or do they have this? And she, if I'm wrong, you can correct me, but reached out to eight comparable cities, seven responded, and all seven of them do not have this position. You, as chief, knowing that, what's your decision to create this position, that comparable cities that we like to be in touch with don't have this?
Well, for one, there, there are a lot of cities across this country that do do this. Again, all the mentees that I've had come in and work with me, and a lot of the chiefs I've talked to do have this for the efficiency and accountability purposes. So when we look at comparable cities, I like to lead on that front rather than follow and wait whatever other city's going to do. I think there's a lot of benefits to the proposal here that will benefit the city inside and outside with accountability. So that's how I answer that.
And I understand that this spot maybe would have been great a year ago to help with the way our city, well, what happened within our city over the last year, but it wasn't there, and we both know that there's a shortfall of police officers currently because we are getting a new class through, which will be through to help the numbers, and then we have another class starting. So with the shortfall of police officers, why now do we need that buffer between you and others who have already filled in for this job?
Right. So I see that as irrelevant. It's, it's position neutral. There are no personnel increases. I'm not taken from any rank that, that we could hire from. I'm not taken from any street officers. An existing deputy chief will assume these duties, so it's personnel neutral.
Thanks for hanging with us today, chief.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Johnson, you're recognized.
Um, chief, the person that you select, will they have an advantage should you retire or leave? And if so, do you think that perhaps testing would help you with that selection?
So I don't think they would necessarily have an advantage. That's one. Two, I'm not looking at leaving.
Okay.
Okay, so I'm not, this isn't some backend way of me trying to succession plan who the next chief is. That's, that's not the case. And a lot of chiefs and commissioners across the country can simply handpick their deputy chiefs. We, we do a testing process here in Omaha, and that, and that's fine, but at, at some point, the chief has to be able to say, this is what, what's best for our organization. And I feel at this very tip of the cone, you know, things get way out here with all the officers, it gets way up here. At this point in time, I feel it's, it's appropriate to allow me to make my decision as to who that, that position will be so we can move the city forward.
Thank you. No further lights.
Item 58, in ordinance to approve an agreement with the Nebraska State Patrol in the amount of $389,668 and to authorize funding from the fiscal year 2020 Saki Grant.
Public hearing on number 58 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 59, in ordinance to approve an agreement with the Nebraska State Probation District 4A in the amount of $5,985 and to authorize funding from the fiscal year 2019 Project Safe Neighborhoods Grant.
Public hearing on number 59 is today. Are there any proponents? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Item 60, in ordinance to amend Chapter 10, Section 10-110 of the Omaha Municipal Code entitled "Rejection of Bids by Clarifying What Constitutes a Minor Defect Capable of Correction After Bids Have Been Opened."
Public hearing on number 60 is today. I'm going to have Mr. Wees and come down if he would. This is our last item today, but it does address an issue that Councilman Palermo and I worked on that does have, you know, I think substantial implications to city contracting and city bids that was apparent during our recent conversations about what had been submitted for our healthcare plans. So a pretty major item with major impact, and I wanted to have Mr. Wees and just give a brief presentation on what this will do.
Ryan Wees, Assistant City Attorney. Just simply put, this clarifies an ambiguity that was, has essentially arisen in what qualifies as a correctable error through the bid process with respect to bid security. Our Omaha Municipal Code specifies certain types of bid security that are acceptable and that we can accept through the competitive bidding process. As you mentioned several weeks ago, there was an issue with a certain bid and some bid security that was submitted that didn't necessarily qualify in one section of the ordinance or our municipal code. This clarifies through an amendment to this section that personal and company checks can be considered acceptable for correction as bid security.
Thank you. And also further clarifies what is not a minor defect, right?
That is correct, including changes to unit prices, extension prices, things like that.
Great. Thank you. Are there any proponents today on number 60? Seeing none, any opponents? Public hearing is closed.
Non-action items. Items 61 through 99 do not require public hearing or city council consideration at this meeting, but will be placed on a future agenda for public hearing under vote. The reason for non-action is noted after the item on the agenda, as well as the date the item is expected to appear on agenda for consideration.
Second, roll call.
Palermo.
Yes.
Rowe.
Aye.
Bagley.
Aye.
Harding. Johnson.
Yes.
Milton. Ms., Mr. President.
Yes.
Motion passed, seven to zero. Meeting is adjourned at 5:43.